It's got air, it's got bathrooms.
Yep.
But they probably have somebody.
Probably.
Yeah, I thought about you.
Hey, sir. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Could I possibly get some time for me next week?
Sure, sure. Um, let me, um...
My schedule is pretty open, so if you could just shoot in one year of alcohol.
Uh, if you'll hang around this meeting gets over, I'll tell you something here in a little bit.
I'm gonna be meeting two open right after this.
Today may work if you're not too long with them.
Yeah, if you're gonna be around, that would be great.
Tuesday, is Tuesday, um, on four weeks.
Oh, good.
So I can pretty much commit the whole day to the here. I may leave for a little bit, go get lunch or something, but I'll be back and, yeah. Maybe we work that whole night?
That'd be great.
So you're doing okay?
Yeah.
I'm doing good. Mean as ever.
Carl couldn't really eat a truck, he couldn't believe it, he was like, nah.
There's your cohort.
Is he there?
I don't know.
That's funny. Morning Nancy.
On behalf of your Board of County Commissioners, we welcome each of you to our morning proceedings. We're asking all to please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Dr. Kirby Kennedy, First Baptist Church pastor, will lead us in our invocation, and the Honorable Nancy Harris will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for the day that you've given us and the great opportunities that we have for good public discussion. Father, for planning and strategies to strive to accomplish, meeting the needs of people in our county, in our region. Father, we know there are lots of needs, there are lots of things that each one of us can do, and I pray that each citizen will use their gifts and their skills to come together in a sense of harmony to meet those needs, especially for our kids. Father, we, uh, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your counsel, we ask for your guidance. We ask that you would continue to divinely intervene within the lives of our county commissioners and our county staff. Father, guide them in every positive direction to follow your will, to follow your biblical laws, and Father, to, uh, to know that we're praying for them, and that we also ask that you would embrace their families, protect them as well. We look forward to what the future has, because we know that you have it in your hand. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Thank you Pastor Dr. Kennedy for sharing with us this morning. Commissioners, each of you should have received the minutes from the April 14th, 2015, regular meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move approval, sir.
Second.
Proper motion and second further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, like sign, hearing none, motion carries. Item three on this morning's agenda is a proclamation to be presented for Putnam County Law Enforcement Office's Memorial Day, and we're asking all that are here and present are represent- representing law enforcement to please come forward. Commissioner Lible will now lead us in presenting this proclamation.
Welcome, officers. Mr. Schul, and good to see you, sir. Right. Okay, I'm gonna read, uh, National Law Enforcement Week and Putnam County Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the week of May 10th, 2015, through May 16th, 2015, has been designated as National Law Enforcement Week, and whereas the day, May 7th, 2015, has been designated locally as Putnam County Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Memorial Day, and whereas Putnam County has dedicated law enforcement men and women serving our county under difficult, stressful, and often dangerous circumstances. And whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual's right to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Whereas Florida and the municipalities within Putnam County desire to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own law enforcement officers comprised of city, town, county, and state law enforcement agencies. Now therefore, be it recognized and proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commission that the week of May 10th, 2015, through May 16th, 2015, be recognized as National Law Enforcement Week, and that May 7th, 2015, be proclaimed Putnam County Law Enforcement Memorial Day. Be it further proclaimed that the citizens of Putnam County are urged to show their support and appreciation of our law enforcement officers who give their lives to protect and serve their communities by attending a countywide law enforcement memorial service to be held Thursday, May 7th, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. at the Ravine Garden State Park. Done, ordered, and adopted this 28th day of April, 2015. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer this res- proclamation in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and a proper second further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Again, congratulations and thank you all so much. Major, we appreciate your leadership on our chair, Solomon, it's an honor that you all are here in spite of all of the difficulties that our nation is facing right now. The nation and world is in turmoil. We're grateful to have the professionals leading us in our department. We're not taking anything for granted, but we encourage you all to continue to promote our community engagement and involvement, by doing what I call P- there, so that we can make sure that the dialogue between our residents continue to be in. Thank you all again for your leadership. And humbly present this on behalf of our commissioners. Okay, we have Commissioner Harvard prepared for the Proclamation Tobacco-Free Florida Week. We have our presentation here, CEO, we come along with the staff and with our students that are represented here. We're so honored that each of you all are here, and we very much appreciate what you do, and you certainly have received state and national recognition for being so progressive as our student leaders. So, joining with the commission as the conference of this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2015-37, Tobacco-Free Florida Week. Whereas secondhand smoke contains a deadly mix, mix of more than 7,000 chemicals, hundreds of which are toxic, and 69 that can cause cancer. And whereas each year approximately 2,520 non-smokers in Florida die primarily from exposure to secondhand smoke. And whereas non-smokers who are exposed to secondhand smoke increase their risk of developing heart disease by 25 to 30 percent, and increase their risk of developing lung cancer by 20 to 30 percent. And whereas children who are, are more likely to have lung problems, ear infections, and severe asthma from being around tobacco smoke. And more than 40 percent of children who go to the emergency room for asthma attacks live with a smoker, and a severe asthma attack can put a child's life in danger. And whereas exposure to secondhand smoke doubles an infant risk of sudden infant death syndrome, and whereas the Putnam County Tobacco-Free Partnership and Students Working Against Tobacco work to reduce tobacco use among youth and adults in Putnam County. And whereas Tobacco-Free Florida is a statewide campaign which educates the public about the health issues of secondhand smoke exposure. The importance of quitting tobacco use promotes tobacco sensation and prevention, and strives for a tobacco-free environment for future generations. Whereas the focus of Tobacco-Free Florida Week is educate, empower, and inspire Floridians to seek out tobacco-free environments for all to understand the importance of creating Tobacco-Free Florida. And whereas the state of Florida is committed to the goals and objectives of the Tobacco-Free Florida Week through the variety of public health activities and programs. Now therefore, the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim April 26th to May 2nd as Tobacco-Free Florida Week in Putnam County, and encourages all citizens to be aware of the dangers of all forms of tobacco. Done, ordered, and adopted this 27th day of April, 2015. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, Proclamation 2015-37.
Second. Motion and a second further discussion.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you very kindly. Let's give a round of applause to these leaders. Co-chairs, and again, I thank you all so much for your leadership, and I'm sure there will be some remarks. Who's gonna make the remarks?
Do you want to? Just do it. I just wanted to say how proud I am of these young leaders behind me. We've got some co-counsel, co-chairs for our, our students working against tobacco, and they will be graduating, so hopefully they will, I know that they will be doing, having their leadership at the state level. It's gonna be a wonderful experience from Putnam County, so we're very proud of them. Also, I think when the newspapers, we've seen that our efforts in our student population and our middle schools has decreased the tobacco rate in Putnam County, quite an amazing rate, so we're very proud of the work that we're doing and will continue. And we thank you very much for your support of us and of the Department of Health in Putnam County. Yes.
Hello, my name is Abria Campbell. I am the county co-chair for Students Working Against Tobacco. I also serve on the Youth Advocacy Board as a representative for the northeastern region of Florida, and I would like to say thank you for supporting this organization, and, yeah.
Hi, I'm Kayla Spengman. I'm a 12th grader at Placa High School. Like he said, or she said, I will be graduating. I also serve as a co-chair for the, our county level, and I serve on the Youth Advocacy Board too, as an alternate.
Hi, my name is Amber Lane. I'm a 12th grader at Placa High School. I'm kinda new to SWAT. I've been in here for a couple months. I'm just a member.
Hi, my... Hi, my name's Nealon Patel, and, um, I go to Jenkins Middle School, and I'm the county, I mean, I'm, I'm the chair for Jenkins Middle School.
Hi, my name is Alicia Johnson. I go to Jenkins Middle School. I am the activity director for Jenkins, and thank you.
My name is Martine Wallenberg. I'm the SWAT coordinator, working with Dave and also with these wonderful kids, and it's been a great pleasure working with the Putnam County School District. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Dave Powell. I'm the program manager for the tobacco program at the Putnam County Health Department, and it's been my pleasure to work with these young ladies this year. They have done an awesome job, uh, presenting to many of the community councils and at other public events. I, I know recently Chip had the opportunity to be at one of those events where two of these young ladies gave a wonderful presentation, and I just applaud them for everything that they do. Thank you very much, you guys.
It is so commendable, you need to know that we're not going to wait and appreciate you later. We appreciate you all right now. We thank you for your stand, we thank you for your position in leadership to enhance health in our communities. It's, it's very warm, and it feels good to know that we have dynamic leaders such as you all that are up and coming, and each day you're making a difference. We're looking forward to the day that we're not just saying Tobacco-Free Week, Tobacco-Free Month, Tobacco-Free Year, and years to come. We're really looking forward to that, so thank you again, and God bless you all. Thank you very kindly. Again, it is so overwhelmingly good to have our leaders from our various schools represented, and they're not just representing on the local level, but state and national, and, um, they know throughout this region that you all are on the cutting edge and on the front line, so thank you so much. As we move to item five on this morning's agenda, let me assure you that all who choose to speak will have opportunity to do so. However, your time limit without being on the agenda is three minutes, and we also ask that you keep in mind that you are bringing matters to the attention of the board. You're not bringing matters to anyone else's attention in this particular forum. It's not reasonable to expect that the board is going to engage in debate or deliberation about matters that we do not have information provided to us prior to and in our agenda packet. Comment cards are conveniently placed on both sides of the entryways coming into the meeting room, and submitted to our deputy clerk, who's sitting right, to the right of the podium. I'm going to, again, urge everyone, uh, pledge of civility. It's printed on the podium, and all we're asking you to do is give us the benefit of having opportunity to listen precisely to what your concerns are, and please direct all of your commentary to us. We are taking notes, we do have minutes, and we will follow through on those areas of concern. We will not engage our department heads unless it is appropriate to do so. We will take notes and do the necessary follow-up. At this time, Mr. James Harold Jr. is wanting to talk about St. John Shipyard and fencework. Mr. Harold, Sonny Harold.
Allow me to be first.
Mr. Wee, it falls today.
James Harold, you got my address. I have the, uh... Pass these around. Mr. Smith, too, I guess. Last, you know, at the last County Commission meeting, I, I saw on the agenda about, or on the consent agenda about the, uh, about the, uh, East Pinellas Road, or the, uh, improvements, and the, uh, was it actually a change order? Number one, the East Pinellas Street roadway and drainage improvements project at a cost of $6,427.90. My concern, you know, my concerns with this, you know, y'all have, uh, had told my mother for years that public funds could not be spent on private property, but that was not the case here. We see public funds is spent on private property when it's dealing with intimate domain, uh, matters. But, uh, getting beside that, I just, I, I went down there and looked. Again, of course, I had to go down there several times a week to check the tower and make, do the readings on the equipment down there at, uh, 135 Liddy Lane, and, uh, to ma- of course, I went down and I said, whether, you know, along Pinellas Road, they got about a thousand foot of new fence up there. I said, well, maybe they made a typo, maybe it was on 140 foot of fence for 6,000, maybe they were talking about a thousand foot of, but no, no. Came back and pulled the agenda up. Y'all were actually gonna re-uh, locate the entrance to the shipyard, I guess, uh, and it's aligneded up with, with, um, with, uh, Pinellas Road now, but it didn't get him down to my point much, real fast. It's a waste, 'cause I go out there, I look down, I come out on Stokes Landing, right across the road is the shipyard. It doesn't need to be realigned. It must not be two or three feet off. I don't see spending 6,000 something dollars, $6,427, for a little bit of alignment. I mean, I don't even see if it's out of alignment, period. And I pulled up the actual worksheet on it. Y'all were gonna spend, uh, uh, $1,200 on 12.5 tons of asphalt. The ba- I guess the next is, based on that, would be $1,300, 177, uh, square yards, and then 12 inches of stabiler- stabilization upgrade. I'm fixing the indecision, brother. Anyway, um, the fence contracting was only, was $3,000, $3,080.
Please summarize. Please summarize your time.
All right. It's a waste, and this is all coming out of a better place paying money. It's no wonder, you know, that people say you aren't transparent when you say it's fencing, but it's moving, and, uh, anyway, it's a waste.
Thank you for your opinion, Mr. Harold. Your opinion is extremely superficial, and if you want details on the project which we attempted to give to you, uh, we will have order. Thank you. The, the information that we talked about when we're dealing with economic development projects, when we're talking about eminent domain and things of that nature, uh, there are no two projects alike, and when we talk about in our community, the lack of jobs, the lack of good jobs throughout our community, uh, there are necessary projects that have to have proper infrastructure in order to support these jobs so that families are supported. So thank you again for your opinion, and we will move forward. Mr. Kevin Charbaugh, you're the next speaker.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. All right, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kevin Charbaugh, 114 Riverview Drive, East Palatka. I'm here this morning at the request of my Board of Putnam Blue Ways and Trails. They wanted me to personally provide you with this recent publications from the state of Florida, Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Recreation and Parks, Office of Park Planning. It's, uh, some, uh, material from the SCORP, which is Florida Statewide Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. A couple of high points I wanted to, to, to show you on these documents. Talks about Florida's top outdoor recreation activities. You see wildlife viewing, 49 percent of residents, 47 percent of tourists. It's one of the, the highest, just after saltwater beach activities. We don't have a saltwater beach, but we definitely have some wildlife viewing in Putnam County. Just wanted to highlight that for you on page two. You'll see more than 70 percent of Florida's visitors include nature-based activities in their travel. 98 percent of Florida visitors say that outdoor recreation is important to their tourist experience. You'll see the economic impact of outdoor recreation, consumer spending 38 billion, state local taxes 2.5 billion, wages almost 11 billion in jobs, 330,000. Page three, we start to talk about recreation and trails, which of course, Putnam Blue Ways and Trails is very interested in trails and the benefits that they bring to our community. Down at the bottom of that page, you'll see every one dollar spent on biking trails and walking paths could save approximately $3 in medical expenses. That's from the American Heart Association. And then flipping over to the final page, trails add value to new homes and consistently remain number one community amenity sought by prospective homeowners. And then the entirety of page four is really why my board wanted me to come here, because they thought it was great. This is talking about the four areas of wildlife viewing, paddling, biking, and equestrian activities, and of course, if you look at our bumper sticker, our logo for Putnam Blue Ways and Trails, that's kind of exactly the four areas that we're focused on in developing this kind of tourism here in Putnam County. To that end, I also have a very brief report to give you about the Placa Bicycle Festival this year. It happened on the weekend of the 18th and 19th. You would see in last Tuesday's paper about riders hit the trails from Palatka. That was written by Mr. Pete Skiba. He came out on Saturday. Well, the numbers, uh, total number of registrations went up from when Pete was by, and we ended up with a total of 72 registrants, 68 participants. The first year of the festival was in 2013. It was, um, the idea of Charles Rudd, the Placa Main Street Manager, and that first year, they had 15 registrations. Last year, in conjunction with Bike Florida being here, they had 48 registrations, and then this year, Blue Ways and Trails cosponsored the event, got very involved with it, and we had a total of 72 registrations. 80 percent of those people came from outside of this county. So that's people coming into the county from elsewhere, spending money here, and having a great time. And, um, the number of people that told me, uh, they had no idea how wonderful the roads were around here for bicycle riding. On the Saturday, the trips went out east of Placa, and on Sunday, they went out west of Placa. Saturday, we had, uh, 12 of those people did the 72-mile ride out to St. Augustine and down the coastline and back, and then we again had another 12 people on Sunday go all the way out to Payne's Prairie, out in Gainesville, do 102-mile bicycle ride. That's, that's more than I can do. I'll, I'll put it that way. That's quite a bit more than I can do. But they enjoyed it, and many commented on how wonderful it was to be out there in the fields, you know, working fields, seeing people actually out there working the fields, and, uh, they particularly liked the, um, the tree canopies on Barrel Factory Road.
Please summarize.
So, uh, all that being said, after we did a debrief, uh, at the end, and the one issue that really came to mind was that the bridge just west of the, um, the Water Management District Building is unaffectionately known as Death Bridge, uh, because it's very, it's a narrow bridge, but even the lead-up to the bridge, for about a quarter mile, they have the rumble strips, which forces bikers to be out in the lane of traffic for at least half a mile. Some, the, the ultimate fix will be when that section of the trail is completed, but in the interim, perhaps some additional signage saying, please watch for bicyclists, or maybe in conjunction with DOT to try to make, be clear a path through the rumble strips that cyclists could actually traverse that path without having to be in the flow of traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We will certainly make sure that information is forwarded to FDOT. Ms. Carolyn Swope, you are the next speaker concerning the landfill.
Good morning.
Good morning. Carolyn Swope, 137 Oak Crest Drive, Interlochen, and good morning to you all.
Good morning.
Please bear with me, I have a point to make after I read my letter to the editor, which was printed in the Palatka Daily News on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. Here goes. A recent Palatka Daily News editorial, "Another Way Forward for the Landfill," gives the history of this past year's landfill issue, and highlights the recommendations from both the First and Second Task Force reports. You also state that there was early opposition to the increased truck traffic generated by an expanded operation. to the increased truck traffic generated by an expanded operation. 'On March 25th, 2014, I stood before the Board of Commissioners during public comment and stated, in response to the recommendation to sell the landfill by Mr. Gast, quote, 'I do not agree. Why should we sell off our asset just so that a private company can make big bucks by turning it into a regional landfill? If we have to have a regional landfill located in Putnam County, and if we have to suffer the negative consequences, 100-plus large trucks seven days a week, being known as a trash capital, et cetera, then we should own it and operate it and keep the profits to fund the county,' unquote. Being prescient is a wonderful thing.'" Okay. "Over a year ago, the choices were basically to sell the landfill or not. No real alternatives were considered. The two task forces ultimately decided to keep the landfill and run it ourselves, just as I had suggested over a year ago. However, as the saying goes, you don't know what you don't know. My views have changed. I now support Waste of Power, the plasma arc gasification plant, which came into view at the end of the first task force less than a year ago. So today, I'm asking you to keep the door open for this new technology, which can be a viable solution to our landfill dilemma." Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Swope. Ms. Roxanne Weeks, you're our next speaker, speaking about leachate and wastewater treatment plan.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Roxanne Weeks. I'm a 16-year resident of Putnam County. This I'd like to present, I'm going to leave with the deputy clerk, my documents when I leave the podium. This is the engineering assessment done by Ayers and associate of the city's wastewater treatment plant. I know you're familiar with Ayers, the county contracts with them, and apparently has confidence in their assessments. This shows that the existing wastewater treatment plant located down by Brown's Landing that accepts the leachate from the landfill was originally designed for a 20-year life, and we're now in 30 years. They, it was never built to accommodate the heavy metals and things that are coming through that leachate. And the county, to increase the dumpage out there and triple, four times, five times, the amount of leachate is just a really questionable solution, and still putting it in this. The county was advised a couple of years ago to build their own leachate filter plant on-site at the landfill. I've never heard any talk about that. The ground, the groundwater, the soil, is poisoned here. There's a lot of people with cancer. There's a reason for that. This shows, I'm going to leave this one. This is the engineering assessment, and it includes the pictures of the deteriorated mechanical conditions of the equipment used there. When the sludge that goes through there and the leachate and everything else, they de-water it, and they are left with 15 to 16 tons a day that go back in this landfill. This is that. This is a report from the EPA government. This shows that the wastewater treatment plant, out of the last 12 quarters over, you know, a three-year period, has been out of compliance 10 of those 12 quarters. There's ammonia, chlorine, nitrogen, dissolved oxygen, phosphorus. And the concerning thing to me is this amount of silver. Mr. McCann told me, I had gone out there last year and was taking on a tour. Mr. McCann told me they had a problem with the hospital dumping. They had to trace it back to the lift station out there at the hospital. That's where they discovered it was coming from. In quarter six, which is ending June 2013, it shows the level of silver coming through the plant 714,186 times the allowable level. I don't understand, with all your committees, your task force, your experts, I don't understand how nobody is aware of these government reports. And to bring more leachate in here when you haven't addressed it, I just don't understand. I really don't. People are poisoned. Our animals are poisoned. And I would hope that you would, regardless of your, you know, unacceptance of the plasma arc gasification, this is what we need. There's issues with Seminole. They are poisoned within a one-mile radius. I've got, it's scary. I'll just put it that way. And I really hope you address these issues. And you might want to take some of that Better Place money you've got coming in for the next 15 years and build a leachate filtration plant on-site.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Thank you, Ms. Weeks. I, I hope that you have made your presentation to the city of Palatka, who's the owner and operator of the wastewater treatment plant. Next speaker's Mr. Rick Haven, landfill issues complaint also. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I have some.
Handout.
Before you is an EPA report. These are excerpts from the report. The assessment was done in July of 2007. The report was issued in February of 2008. It talks about over 14 or 16 different plants in Florida, one of which is Seminole Electric Plant. And if you read on the back of the second page, it says Florida Seminole Plant FGD, which is Flu Gas Desinfestation Landfill. Groundwater and surface water data indicate gross excesses of both primary and secondary drinking water, and water quality standards of Seminole Electric Cooperative FGD landfill. Surface water data show boron at levels at over 1,000 times its guidance concentration. Surface water data also revealed exceedances of aluminum at 4,100 times the Class III freshwater cleanup target levels. In addition, the secondary maximum contaminant levels exceeds in surface water for chlorine over 30 times, sodium over three times, sulfur over three times. The TDS over eight and a half times are found. Groundwater contamination in Seminole landfill measured arsenic at 19 times. The medical collateral litigament and lead over 100 times the MCL. Boron is measured at 40 times its guidance concentration, aluminum at 20 times, sulfur at three times. In view of these massive exceedance of drinking water and water quality standards, EPA should investigate the Seminole Electric Cooperative landfill for potential threat to health and environment. The ash is now coming to the Putnam County landfill, or a portion of it. The last page of that report is a report from the Florida Health Department, updated yesterday, that lists the amount, or the number of cancer-related deaths in Putnam County is third in the state. And in another report, I had over 160 people a year die from cancer in Putnam County. Can you people say Aaron Brockovich, Pacific Gas and Electric? The report came out almost seven years ago, and the county has done nothing.
Please summarize.
Your mission statement? To make Putnam County government the most responsive, effective government in Florida, while making Putnam County the best place to live, work, and raise a family. You guys have failed.
Thank you, sir. This is, your, your time is up. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your opinion. And in your report, it did say that EPA should investigate, and I'm sure with you bringing us a report that's over seven years old, that that has happened. But we certainly will document what you presented. Thank you.
But those things have not changed. I also dropped off at your mailbox and Mr. Larry's, as you requested at the last meeting, my complaint. Is that going to be addressed?
It will not be addressed in this meeting, because it is in the hands of the administrator. But I do have my carbon copy, and there will be follow-up. Thank you so much.
Can I ask one more question?
Please be expeditious.
Okay. I have financial statements here. Ms. Harrison, Ms...
No, sir. We're not going there. You've used your time. And if you need to see Ms. Harris after the meeting, please do so.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Let me ask you then.
You have used your time. Ms. Linda Kreider, you're the next speaker.
Next time.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Excuse me. You are, you are out of order, ma'am. Please be seated. Please be seated. Ms. Kreider, you're next. Time is not assignable. Thank you so much for your generosity. Ms. Kreider, you're up.
Thank you. My name's Linda Kreider, and I reside at 116 Kirkland Street, Palatka. I'm here this morning to support the Blue Ways and Trails report Kevin gave, and to congratulate everyone on the Palaca Bicycle Festival. Also, Dunn's Creek had a wonderful Earth Day celebration day, and lots more people than they thought they were going to have. Usually, when I come before you, I'm very positive. Today, I want to register my disappointment. And it's a disappointment, basically, in the fact that we had a very expeditious Trails Council and Trails Working Group that was made up of Chip Libel, as its chief, and Craig McLean, and volunteers, as well as city staff members. And we were really moving forward. Don Jacobowitz has been a champion, working with DOT to make the trail system happen. But I feel like right now, we're in a stall pattern. We haven't met in over nine months. The Trail Council, that is an inter-community council with Crescent City and many of the other communities in Interlaken, has not met in three years. And we have come to depend on the Putnam County, the Putnam Blueways and Trails CSO is now the major force. This is a group of very passionate volunteers. Three years ago, I received $2,000 as a Trails, National Trails Champion, to put toward the trail of my choice. And instead, I decided it was worthwhile to set up the CSO, not with the idea that it replaced the Working Group, the Trails Working Group, or the Trails Council. But all the initiative seems to have fallen on the shoulders of a group of 20 passionate volunteers, whose efforts are really to create ecotourism in Putnam County and events, not to shepherd a bicycle pedestrian facilities system, which is the idea to connect to the trails. And that's to try and create road systems with paved shoulders, bike lanes, traffic calming, roundabout facilities that will then help our community members get to the trail system that DOT is funding to bring through our community. This information I brought before you a year and a half ago, in a working transportation meeting, was approved, was approved through the city. It was called a system plan, and it has sat on a shelf. We haven't amended our Trails Master Plan in, Chip, I don't know, 10 years. We have not met. And I'm, I just want to register my disappointment. And I know there's a lot very more critical and important things, as you've just heard from people that I'm awed about. Water quality, that's our number one issue here. But we've got a momentum here to bring people into Putnam County for very healthy things. And I'd like to see a champion some way here from this group to work with the, your county employees to further our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreider. I'm sure that the Transportation Committee will further discuss this issue. Ms. Evelyn Roberts, you're the next speaker. Please come forward, concerning the landfill. Evelyn Roberts. Evelyn Roberts?
I just want to ask you...
Please come forward, please come forward, ma'am, to the podium, so that you can be properly amplified and recorded. Good morning.
What I wanted to ask you, gentlemen and ladies, I would like to yield my time to Rick Haven.
No, ma'am. That does not happen. Mr. Haven has his own, his own three minutes. You have yours, and now you have two minutes and 40 seconds.
Well, that's all I wanted to know, wanting to yield my time. I know they do it with the government. I didn't know y'all didn't do it.
That's just not the policy here. Thank you so much. Mr. Robert Bly, you're the next speaker. Pollution from effluent.
Good morning, everyone. Robert Bly, 116 Sand Lake Drive, Putnam Park. Glad to see everyone's alive and well today.
Thank you.
Everybody looks good. Apparently, we haven't been out at the Seminole Generating Station Ash Plant. This study that was done by Earth Justice includes the U.S. Energy Information Administration report. This, this shows really high toxic levels of ash, toxic releases into groundwater of arsenic, boron, chloride, iron, and lead. This, this goes straight into the groundwater here in Florida because of the way that our substrate material is, we're sand sitting on top of limestone, and limestone's porous. So, anything that gets out of a liner, from a spill, or from a cracked pipe, let's say, like, for instance, in, in Palatka, and I know it's a city issue, but if you think about it as just a city issue, then you'd have to ignore that we're using effluent from the landfill, which is county-owned, run by the commissioners, and put into the sewer drains, which goes to the wastewater treatment plant. Now, those pipes are old. You know, they're probably cracked, definitely not watertight. So, a lot of that effluent is getting out of those pipes and contaminating local areas. So if you were to follow the pipe from where it's dumped in, in Palatka, to the wastewater treatment plant, along that line, there's going to be effluent getting out of that pipe. Now, if it was a new pipe that was made of a certain type of material that could handle high acids or other things that are coming from the landfill effluent, then I could see how that might not be leaking. But as it is, those pipes are at least 50 years old. Some are 100 years old. And it's got to be getting out. There's, there's really no other way about. There's definitely contamination coming from leachate from the landfill being dumped into the wastewater drains in Palatka. If we could come up with a better way, I think that's where we need to go. You know, a page is a good idea. Waste, wastewater can be taken care of at the plant. A lot of these issues that have been brought up today could be taken care of by a page. So I just really wish that you would consider listening to a page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bly. There is a pending meeting for the arc gasification. And so I'm sure those issues will be discussed. Ms. Elizabeth Bacon Smith, you are the next speaker, Alternative Energy. And you have some packets?
Yes. I mentioned these packets previously. Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlaken. I mentioned these packets previously. I have only three to give you today. So I will have to bring Larry's and Nancy's later.
You give it to staff. Staff will make sure that all five of us get them.
Well, yeah, I could do that.
It's your call.
Anyway.
Okay.
I'll give them yours.
Whatever you choose to do, Ms. Bacon.
So that's my way of encouraging you to be open to alternatives. It's just part of moving forward in the 21st century. I know that I read an article, just a brief one, about with Phyllis Criswell... I know that, I read an article, just a brief one, about with Phyllis Criswell making a point that our government and, and the, the school board was on Twitter and Facebook and blogging, which is part of moving forward. And we would be remiss not to move forward in ways that are far more impacting. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bacon Smith. Ms. Bonnie Carolyn, you fill out three comment cards. Please come forward. I'm not quite sure how to interpret.
I'm sorry.
Come forward, please, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three cards, comment cards from you, and I'm not quite sure how to interpret. One says landfill, one says John Spels, and one says consent agenda AC and mobile home.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you want to start out with the landfill?
If that's where you would like for, for me to start. That's entirely up to you all. On the landfill issue, before we moved here in 2002, we had been coming up here for quite a while. And we noticed, oh, by the way, my name is Bonnie Carolyn. I live on Drayton Island. We had noticed that a lot of the people that we interacted with, the citizens, it was, people were dying of cancer everywhere. And so I started doing some research and I even went, because I live on the island, I got ahold of the Navy trying to see if perhaps the old bombing range that was, that was in Lake George might have had something to do with the contamination. And what I was told by the, by the Department of Defense is they don't have a clue what they dumped in there because it was rented out to even foreign countries to use it for a bombing range. And as I've moved up here, I've seen more and more, I believe we have a cancer cluster. And I don't know what's causing it. But certainly the issues of coal ash being dumped into our landfill and knowing that Seminole Electric is like number four in the state for the amount of coal ash residue that's put out and the amount that is dumped into our landfill, that is concern. And so if we have this leche that is coming through with the coal ash and the, the heavy metals and the level of toxicity, I'm not really sure where we can go on this. I don't, I'm not educated enough to know if a page and the art gasification can take care of coal ash. If it can, hallelujah. If it can't, it's still, I believe we have a cancer cluster and I would like to ask all of you to, to look at that. We have citizens here who, who have children and their children. We need to have clean drinking water. We need to have clean air. I came from Vieques, so I'm very aware of what the Navy and the military can do with, with some of their residues because of what happened there. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but in Vieques, Puerto Rico, it was found that the Navy's bombing range was putting contaminants in the air and in the water and they're, they had a very high cancer cluster and they actually shut down the Navy bases, which means that now we've got more over in Putnam here with our Navy base. But we've got a cancer cluster and I believe some of it's coming from the landfill, some of it certainly is coming from coal ash that's being dumped by Seminole Electric, some of it may be coming from our bombing ranges. We really need to, to take our citizens at heart on this, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Don't leave yet. Let me understand the rest of what you're speaking about. We certainly do have our Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency. And again, all of your comments are being recorded, so there will be follow-up, I'm sure. There are some things that are outside of our jurisdiction, but we'll do our very best to be a liaison where it's required. On these other items that you have, it says consent agenda and it says AC.
Animal control.
Okay, so animal control, which is which item?
That, I'm not, I think it was E, I know that the, I'm not sure exactly what item it was from planning and development. It's the fee schedule for animal control.
So that's item 9B.
Okay.
Hold on one second, please. And then the other item that you have is mobile home, that is the public hearing. That is item 9A. You'll be called back at the time we get to those items. And then Mr. John Spels and the issue related to planning and development services, that is item 10. So you'll be called back at that time.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Any other public comments? That's all of the speaker's cards that we have. Thank you very kindly. We will close public comment section of the agenda. Commissioners, item 6 is our consent agenda. Are there items that should be pulled because of discussion or dissension?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about item 6E, but it looks like we're going to be discussing that on item 9B also. So is, can we wrap it all into one? Or would you like to make two different conversations about it?
The 9B is a different?
Pardon me, Commissioners. The fee schedule issues on 6E are separate from the one in 9B. 9B specifically pertains to the ordinance in Section 9 only. The other fee issues are in 6E.
Okay. While you're standing, Mr. Director, I would like to take the consent agenda as a whole. If there needs to be any discussion or questions on item E, let me just read for the benefit of all concerned. Consent agenda consists of list of committee minutes and recommendations that is distributed to become part of the record, list of correspondence distributed to become part of the record, emergency services, renew emergency communications network code red agreement in the amount of $11,497.50, mass emergency notifications via telephone, email and text through June the 30th, 2016. The administration sheriff's budget amendment resolution, $2,353 to record revenue and allow for expenditures, FDLE JAG grant for rapid ID scanner device. E is administration resolution amending to 2014, 2015 fee schedule exhibits F and G animal control exhibit F and wastewater charges exhibit G. F is recreation resolution amending the current CIP to include Tanglewild Nature Park. G, general services list of surplus inventory. H is the sheriff's request for expenditure from special law enforcement trust fund number 119 in the amount of $18,426. Special purchase, special equipment purchase for drug unit Oculus Easy Go Kit camera. Is, are there any other discussion items in addition to E, Commissioners?
I have none.
Okay, let's bring our director up to discuss E and then we will take the consent agenda as a whole. Mr. Hammond, thank you for being here. Page 23 in your commissioner packet. 24.
Yes, sir. The only portions of the, this particular item that are, fall under my department are Schedule F. That has to do with animal control fees. We're making certain adjustments because it simply doesn't make any sense for us to deliver traps and we're losing a lot of traps. So we are attempting to make them more efficient by, by charging a, a refundable deposit before we allow traps to go out. And then secondly, we do not deliver them and we do not pick them up. The public has to bring them to us. Now certainly if somebody's handicapped or something along those lines, we will make arrangements for them. But as a general matter, that requires us to drive over an 800 square mile county, 800 plus square mile county, to be delivering traps and to be picking them up is simply not efficient, excuse me, simply not efficient on our part.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Commissioner Harvey, specific questions, sir?
Mr. Hammond, if you don't mind. We talked about this last week in our workshop meeting, but we really didn't have the figures here. How are these figures that were changing compared to surrounding counties that we, that are, that are close to us in proximity?
All of our fees are considerably below surrounding counties. I mean virtually every fee we have is beneath the surrounding counties.
My concern is I just don't want to be overpriced where people just go, my animal's not worth me picking that up and we're stuck with it. We, I mean, we really want to encourage the animals to be back out to their owners or to a new owner at that point. And I just, I'm concerned that we might be going up higher than what we need to be going up at.
I understand. It just depends on how much you want to subsidize that process, that function.
I understand, sir.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Also to add, Mr. Harvey, we have an anonymous donor that is paying all the fees but $10 for the unseverable future in any adoptions at this point. That does help your concern. And I would like to also bring out as chairman over to Animal Services Committee that the annual budget that we received, estimated budget from the Sheriff's Department, when the Planning and Development Services took this, this organization on was way off. I'm not sure where the discrepancies were, but it's much more expensive than we had thought. So we're working through a progress, progress right now. Our euthanization rates are way, way down. We, we're making great improvements. We have an adoption center that's under construction in this complex right now where we plan on achieving no kill as soon as possible. We are working in that goal, but make no mistake about it, to run an animal services facility in any county in the state of Florida, it costs money. And for meds, for food, we have a lot of volunteers, we have rescue groups that work with our animal control facility all the time, picking up animals. I mean, it's unreal, the effort that's going into this to get us out of this high kill zone, so.
And as always, as always, we beg the public, please spay and neuter your animals.
Absolutely.
Mr. Commissioner, thank you for that. I really applaud you. I went to a few of the Animal Services meeting and the progress that's being made is tremendous. So I do applaud that committee.
But we're aware of the fees and I want you to know that and we, we're bringing them down every way we can. Adoption is key to a no-kill zone.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Carolyn, if you'll come back, your concerns may fit 6E rather than 9B.
Appreciate this.
Yes, ma'am.
Two issues I have with the fee sc, with, with the current thing before you on the consent agenda with regards to animal control. One is the $250 reclaim fee for a cat or a dog. And a reclaim fee is if your dog or cat gets loose and you go to pick it up and you want your, your fur baby home. It's $250 if the cat or dog is in heat. Now, it says on there, what you're going to be approving is that that amount, if you take your dog or cat to the vet and you get it fixed, then the amount of the surgery will be reimbursed off of what you have already paid the county. Now I know that we can take cats to Clay County or to Jacksonville and we can get them spayed and neutered for somewhere between free to $50. Dogs are a little bit higher, it goes by weight. Here is what I see. You're asking a citizen who's lost their fur baby to give you $250 and then to go to a local vet. If they don't get to Jacksonville, they might not have a car or they might not drive because they're old, to now put out at a local vet another $150 to $250 to get their animal fixed and then come back and get a refund, if any. That's $500 out of a person's pocket. There's a lot of our citizens who cannot afford $500. That's the one issue. The other issue is cats and dogs go into heat at a very young age. On cats, we know that we are now fixing them between the ages of 10 to 12 weeks because a cat can go into heat at four months of age. Most of our citizens don't know that. For puppies, they can go into heat early. However, it is highly recommended that you do not spay or neuter a puppy before five months of age. And there is a, a reason for that and it's their growth and their hormones that they need. So we are making that part of this consent punitive to our citizens and possibly a health risk to our animals. And I will tell you, if that $250, you're going to see your euthanasia rates go up.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn.
I have one more issue, if I could.
Let me just deal with that issue first. Again, from the chairman's perspective of the committee, what's the method to the madness on that particular fee?
Well, we, the cats during, especially this time of year, I mean, you know, we're inundated with them. And then we have the people that, most people don't redeem these animals and you know that too. And when we get them and we bring them in, we try to get them adopted out. So to be honest with you, this $250 is a fee, I think it's excessive, you know. Staff said it, Brian, if you want to defend it, but it's a situation, I promise you, that we're hardly ever in. What we're trying to stop too is people turning their animals into animal control or calling us to come get them to be euthanized.
But that's not what this is for. This is for reclaiming your animal if it's in heat. First off, you're not going to know if a cat's in heat, probably. Dogs, you can pretty well tell. But it is punitive on the citizens because now it's $250 for them to get their puppy or cat back if they want it, if it's in heat and you can determine it. We don't have a vet-on staff at animal control.
Also, you know, the counties you just mentioned, they're strength in numbers.
I understand that.
We just don't have it. The same 28,000 homes in this county pay the bills for everything.
Sweetie, I understa, you're singing to the choir here. I've been doing animal rescue and spay-neuter for over 40 years of my life.
God bless you. You've done a great job. You really have rescued a zillion of them. And, you know, our job's not finished.
No, it isn't. But I think this is punitive. I think if we brought the, I agree, we, we, we want every animal in this county. I'll be the first one out there to say we want to spay and neuter everything that walks, quite honestly. I don't have a problem with that. Okay.
Bonnie, Bonnie, Kevin's leaving on that note right now. Bye, Kevin.
I mean, you do get to that point where you just want to spay and neuter everything.
Don't leave, Kevin.
Driving them out of the house, Bonnie. No, but listen, we're, we're working with Rick Ducharme at First Coast No More Home and Pets and some other spay-neuter programs. We, we, we know we have to improve here, but we're, we're improving at a really rapid face, pace right now and.
Well, Mr. Ducharme has, has been very kind. He's come down and offered, he hasn't heard from us, by the way. I talked to him after our last Animal Services meeting. Says he hasn't heard from us in a long time.
We're not ready for him. Put it frankly, we're not.
Well, I do think it's punitive. I think that the $250 is high. I think we need to work on that and massage it a little bit and see if we can't make it more pet and pet parent friendly.
You've got my word, I'll do it.
Because we're not get, what you've got on here is not going to get us the results we're looking for and that's, so otherwise it's just a way to make money and that's not the purpose, should not be the purpose of this.
I know you think about this all the time, but think towards a solution and share it with me.
I will. I will come up with another solution, but the $250, so I at this point would like to have that stricken from that part of it so that we can work on it and I will definitely work on it with you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll bring in people, you know, I work with people across the US.
I know you do.
So, the other issue that I have on the animal control agenda is the, my brain just went out the window. The rabies. Thank you. I would like to know, in there it says it is $15, five of course would go towards the licensing and $10 for the rabies. Who's going to be giving these shots? Who's going to be administering these rabies shots at animal control?
We're not, that I know of. Come on, Brian. Mr. Chairman, I'm not taking you.
You're fine.
We're not yet.
It's the, the vets do that and then we, they send us a voucher and we pay for it.
We do and we're trying, we're soliciting for services now from a licensed veterinarian, Bonnie, to be able to do, have these services there.
Well, because the way it's written, it appears as animal control would be doing the rabies certification. That's against state law. A veterinarian actually has to push the plunger.
Right.
I mean, that's required by state law, so that is, that was mine.
Well, I said, we're not, but we were trying to solicit.
Well, why is animal control collecting the $15?
Well, if they were, if it took place at our facility with a licensed vet, we would pay.
Yes, that's a different story.
That's what, this is alluding to the future, not the present.
Okay.
It's what we hope to achieve.
Because right now we don't have a vetted animal control, so therefore we cannot administer rabies shots.
We almost, we've got somebody in mind. We're getting close.
Okay, thank you so much.
That was it, so.
Let's, let's address, thank you so much, Ms. Carolyn. I'm going to address this to the director and obviously the chair of the committee. On the redemption fees, there, is there an interim number that is lower than this number that we can plug in for these requested changes? They're knowing that it's still going to be adjusted, but rather than skyrocket rather than skyrocket, is there a happy medium?
And I admit, this was intended to be punitive for folks who let their animals out, unspayed and neutered. We can just leave that particular line item alone, and leave it what it currently is, and again, I apologize, I do, don't remember what the current fee schedule says it is, but we can just leave it alone and leave that one unchanged.
Fifty may be too low, if that's what the current is. Two-fifty may be too high. So, where is our happy medium?
That depends on the, again, this contract, a licensed vet, if we were to provide this service at our facility, or contract with No More Homeless Pets, we had a, the last time we were with them, Bonnie, what was it? Uh, I think for twenty-five bucks, we were sending animals to Jacksonville. We had a neuter commuter, we had a gutted-out motor home, and we put the animals in there.
It depends upon their grants. It depends upon the grants that they get, since they're a nonprofit organization. Um, it, it's, it depends upon whether it's a cat or a dog, and it depends on whether the cat is feral or a pet. There's a lot of different variables on there. Uh, I would imagine that you could probably negotiate something along the lines of between seventy-five to a hundred-and-twenty dollars with First Coast No More Homeless Pets. But I'm speaking way out of turn here.
We had a grant last time, and we had it down really to twenty-five.
Yes, it depends on the grants. And again, you know, and so that's something that, that I would be more than happy to meet with you and Rick Ducharme, or with Clay County. Clay County, right now, is taking over and covering what we can't do here in Putnam. God bless you, Clay County, we appreciate it. And I'm, I've stopped my runs to Jacksonville, because I can't, even as a rescue, I cannot get the prices that a, a citizen from Putnam can get at Clay County. So, I'm sending, I've stopped, I've stopped my spay runs. And I would love to start them up again. We really, that's what we need, is transport.
Thank you so much.
Now, are you aware that Mr. Ducharme is also looking into pods?
Is that right?
Yeah, for mobile spay-neuter clinics.
That would be nice.
Might want to do it.
Putnam, maybe?
Well, if we extend our hand, we've, I've talked to Rick. He says, you've got to ask. He says, I've gone, I've done what I'm going to do. You need to come to me.
Excuse me if I interrupt, and you all need to take that back up in the next animal control meeting. I want to entertain among the commission, uh, a reduced, instead of going back to the norm, I think that we can find a happy medium somewhere between one-twenty-five, one-fifty. Is there a suggestion just for the interim until such time?
One-twenty-five.
One-twenty-five is suggested? Is there, uh, any more consideration? Uh, for now, just knowing that you've got to go back to it. Is that just kind of consensus?
We can get it done commercially for that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, so that should provide some relief, uh, there. So, suggested amendment to the Exhibit F, animal control fees for redemption fees for dog cats in season, uh, one-twenty-five adjustment to the, um, to that council. Do we need to take that up separate? Uh, can that go with the consent?
It can go with the consent.
Thank you. Consent agenda is being, uh, before you now, A through H, with the suggested revision or amendment, uh, to Exhibit F.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Proper motion by Commissioner Harvey.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Liveau. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very kindly. Item seven, Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC, presentation of the county's independent audit, page thirty-five. Thank you.
Good morning.
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 I'm Tina Robinson with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, nine oh-six South State Road nineteen in Palatka. And our partner, John Rowe, is, he said he's got my back, so he's back there.
He's got your back.
Another partner with our firm. As you know, this morning, we're, um, we've completed the audit of the county for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty-fourteen, and we're here this morning to summarize those results for you. First, I wanted to bring to your attention that there were a couple of new governmental accounting standards that were effective this year, called Gatsby sixty-five and seventy, with the primary effect to the county being the reclassification of certain resources to deferred inflows in the governmental funds. So, you see a little bit more in that new classification. Also, you'll see a footnote disclosure of non-exchange financial guarantees related to the ship program. And those two new standards are mentioned in your footnotes, twenty and twenty-one, on page forty-seven. And then, just to briefly mention that next year, as stated on page fifteen of your footnotes, you will see that there's, there are additional standards that will become effective at that time, and your county finance management is looking at how these will apply to the county, especially on the standard relating to pensions.
Excuse me, one second. Uh, the footnotes and the notes?
We don't have it. Your page numbers, they're.
You don't have the book.
They're in sections in Roman numerals, and you don't have page numbers in there. I downloaded it, and it was hard to follow.
Your, the Roman numeral pages are actually your management discussion analysis that's written by your management?
Mm-hmm.
Um, our pages are numbered, so.
You're right, you're right. But that's what we looked at. I did, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
But I'm following you.
Do you have the rest of the document? Should I just avoid?
We didn't get the hard copies this year.
We didn't get it. I don't have any.
It's all online.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You got pushed into the twenty-first century?
I don't know about you guys, but I'm following. I know where she's at on it. I'm good.
Um, we did, we did send some hard copies, and, um, apologize, seems like those did not get to you.
Excuse me. I do have two copies over here with me, if.
Could we take a recess and make some copies real quick?
It's a.
It's a very large document.
It's this big.
Whatever you would like.
Mr. Chairman, maybe this should be put off till the next meeting, we have time to review these documents.
Well, Mr., all right, if I could.
Yes, sir.
All right, staff, Mr. Smith and John Jones prepared these guys for us. They're at the beginning of the audit, and if you go in and download each of the, by page number, it'll want to print two-hundred-and-fifty pages. But if you go in and identify page fifteen, and the different deals there, it gives you a great synopsis to, I was complimenting Mr. Jones earlier, how easy this is to follow this year, his, uh, his effort.
What issue comes up for this to be presented?
We'd be glad to come back to another meeting if you prefer.
Is it any side effects? Maintain a motion to table the report until the next scheduled meeting?
Subdue, sir.
Second motion, second. Further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. No reflection on you?
None.
We just don't have the documentation, but thank you so much. Uh, commissioners, I would like to take up one more item before we go into a recess mode. Item eight is a continued PUD fifteen-dash-double-oh-two, Stephen Stratton Amendment to Hours of Operation PUD. Uh, thank you so much, Mike.
Mike Brown, uh, planning manager, Putnam County Planning and Development Services, this, and, uh, Mr. Salmon's couldn't make it today, so I'm filling in. Um, this continuation from the, um, last meeting on the fourteenth, I believe it was.
Yes, sir.
And just to give you a, a quick summary, um, a, um, Mr. Stratton had, Steve Stratton had submitted an application to amend, minor applica-, uh, application for a minor amendment to the existing PUD for the River Rat, uh, racetrack. Um, the request was to extend the hours of operation from, um, eight a.m. till twelve p.m. The existing PUD, as approved, allowed operations from ten a.m. to ten p.m. Planning Commission, at their hearing, recommended to the Board of County Commissioners, uh, that the hours be extended from seven a.m. to ten p.m., with the ability of Mr. Stratton to have six special events during the year that would allow the operations to go from seven to twelve midnight, on those six times a year. Um, Mr. Stratton had some concerns with that, as you recall, with that, and he, he's, would like, he is requesting the Board consider his original, um, request from, uh, eight to twelve midnight. A neighbor of his has some concerns with it, and that led to the, um, request, or the continuation of this, um, hearing. Um, there was a, a request by the commission, by the chair, to, um, play a video at the time. We had some technical difficulties, and I believe we've got that resolved, and Harris will get that, hopefully, working for you.
Super. No pressure.
Boy, it's awfully quiet. You sure you got a noise problem?
Anticipation, anticipation. Our load.
Like the loud bird.
Thank you. Any further discussion, sir?
Yeah, um, staff doesn't have anything. I, I would have to look up, I don't know off the top of my head what our ordinance says.
I think it's seventy-eight.
But everybody ha, I mean, they're require, everybody would be required to meet that, or in this case, Mr. Stratton would, if he violates that, um, we could take enforcement actions aga-, against that. I just don't, off the top of my head, remember what those.
It's okay. I mean, you just proved, without a doubt, that this is crazy.
And again, Mr. Stratton is here to, to make his point, and.
We'll call him if we need to. He made his point at the previous meeting. This is a continu-, this is a continuation.
If I couldn't, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Stratton, though.
Okay, Mr. Stratton, please come.
And also, the, his neighbor, who has a concern with it, is also here, just in for your information.
Thank you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Uh, Stephen Stratton, I own a racetrack at five sixteen State Road two oh seven, and I, my residence is nine-nine-thirty West Eat Creek Boulevard in Hastings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liveau.
Okay, as I've stated the last meeting, I know the hoops and, and, uh, conforming that you went to, to, to build this.
Yes, sir.
And in this county, we always complain about things for our kids to do and families to do, and I commend you for making a facility to, to make that better.
Thank you.
But, um, the, are you sure six times a year is all you need? I'm here to promote you. I think you've done an outstanding job. Your facility's beautiful, it's quiet. I don't know where this complaint came from, and I don't think it's just. But if you need more, I'm here to offer.
Well, I think the times that I requested would definitely, you know, from the, uh, to the midnight deal, would definitely open up the door. The six times would be plenty for anything outside that, because on a big, I'll, I'll give you, for instance, and it just happened this way, and it wasn't, never planned a bad situation, but we had a big race two weekends ago. It wasn't a nitro race, so it was an electric race. And it rained right up till Thursday. So, Friday morning, which I own a site company, too, so Friday morning, I got my guys out there preparing the track, because it was mud, digging it up, regrading it. Well, we didn't have the track ready till Friday night about four-thirty. I had two people show up to practice, because that's what they asked me, can we, how long can we practice as a man? And we're at ten o'clock, we're at ten o'clock. So, they were turned away to, and of course, it affected our whole outcome the next day. But the rain played into that also. But I know that that was, that was, a lot of these RC tracks, I guess this is what I'm competing against, too, to give y'all a kind of a, a history of RC racing. A lot of these guys aren't legal. A lot of these guys, it's in their backyard, it's in the corner of an industrial park that nobody knows about. They're not following the letter of the law like I am. And they just race all the time through the night to the next day, you know, and that's kind of what these guys are used to. And I'm not asking that, that's kind of being unreasonable, in my opinion. But, uh, that's kind of what I fight. And, you know, this little bit, I know two hours doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you add the front and the back, that's four of wiggle room per day, which allows me a lot. Um, but I think the six times outside of, you know, the seven to twelve is more than enough.
So, the times, what you're looking for, more than the actual dates?
Yeah, yes, sir, because the, uh, the six times of scheduled events I can, I can do, that's not ever a problem. It's that rain out, that rain problem on not the big events, which is on my regular nights, you know. And I mean, big events won't pay for that place. I mean, it's not pay for in itself now with all the events, but, um, the big events won't pay for that place alone, because there's just not enough time.
Again, I'm here, I, I, I hear you, I've read through your materials, I think you've done everything right. You're good for the community. If you need more, I'm here right now to lead the charge.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Liveau, thank you so much for your comments. Just before the vice chairman speak, there was an original staff recommendation concerning the hours. I'm not in favor of us, uh, considering times. This man is in business.
Yes.
Up there. I've been on two oh seven, I've been past the business when, um, the, there were clientele there. I've been on Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, I've been on Walden Road, I've circled, uh, those areas, uh, there, and, and he's right. The, the traffic on two oh seven is actually louder than his operation. Uh, when it comes down to, uh, the comprehensive plan consistency and things of that nature, I think, uh, the original requests, which staff recommended approval on, uh, to me lends itself, because who's going to be enforcing, uh, times and how many times, you know, it's, it's been done? So, I want us to at least be thinking about that. Commissioner Pellicia?
Uh, just to comment, um, since you were last here, um, weather was nice, and I was going to Hastings with my windows down, riding along. And if I had not looked over there and saw the cars actually going round and round, I never knew you were there. I didn't, I couldn't hear it in the rain.
Right, right. I mean, two oh seven definitely drowns out everything around there, you know, and that's kind of why businesses are put on main highways, I believe personally, because it's the quiet neighborhoods that are off the beaten path that are quiet. And everybody that lives on two oh seven unfortunately has to deal with way worse noise than I'm creating. And I'm only creating the nitro noise for one race or two, the rest of it's electric. And then it's not but once a weekend, if we're lucky, you know. Now, during the summer months, we'll back off to once a month, because it's just too hot. People don't want to stand out there. And a lot of our customer base is grandchildren with their grandparents, and they're not wanting to sit out in the hot sun for eight hours at a time, you know, and so it's, it's, I, I mean, I could sell it to you, I don't, I'm trying not to be a salesman, I'm trying to just be an honest businessman, but, I mean, it's, it's the only sport out there to where women can compete against men, you know, and gr- grandchildren can compete against their grandparents. And everybody as a whole has fun and can almost, I mean, there's, there's a bunch of senior citizens that are better than I am, and there's some twelve-year-old kids that are way better than me, you know, and, and I own the place. So, I mean, it is definitely, you know, it's a positive thing. It's a struggle for me, but it's definitely a positive thing as, for families, you know, and that's what got me into it, me and my son.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. Uh, family entertainment, for sure. Director, you have something to share with us?
Not specifically related to the case, but just a reminder, since Russ is not here, this is a quasi.
Not specifically related to the case, but just a reminder, since Russ is not here, this is a quasi judicial hearing. And do you have any ex parte communications to disclose?
Thank you very kindly. District one.
I have had no ex parte communications.
I have none either.
None.
I've had none. I've had none, sir.
Commissioners, I'd like for us to consider the original request and the original recommendation that extends the hours of operation from ten AM to ten PM to eight AM to twelve midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Is that still in alignment with what your needs are, sir?
Yes, I don't know if there's a possibility to revisit the six scheduled events up to six, if I would even use them. Is there that to run over every once in a while? Is that even a possibility?
Six, is that, is that a weekday event you're talking about?
No, sir, no, sir. We, in our first, in one of our hearings, we threw it around the idea on big events, you know, having a six.
You don't need six if you've got it every week.
Well, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking.
If the six is out of the window, based on what I'm recommending, you know, you're basically, your hours of operation is just being revised, period, without any.
I was asking the question, that's all.
Yes, sir. That's what I'm saying. What's the pleasure of this commission?
I move approval, staff recommendations, amendment to the original put.
Original staff recommendation.
Second staff, sorry.
Have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Stratton.
Thank you so much. We're going to take a seven-minute recess for the specific public hearings on the item nine. And then we'll be reconvening at that time. Thank you.
Good job there, Harris. Enjoy the show.
Thank you. Planning and Development Services, there was a question that was posed as it relates to the continuation of the previous case. The case was continued only because the commission did not have video from that meeting. So it was not a continuation of the actual public hearing for individuals to speak. We, we had all of the speakers. We needed the video for the commission to make the decision. And that was why after getting the video, we were able to conclude deliberations and make the decision. Again, I want to let all of the citizens know, under public comments, we're expecting our citizens to speak for their three minutes. The question was asked a moment ago, why you can't delegate. If we are speaking on an agenda item and someone wants to yield their time, that certainly is an option. But it is not an entitlement there. It's a privilege and we're honored for all of our citizens to come and to share all three minutes of commentary, unless you decide to be on the agenda. Thank you so very much. Item ten, ordinance relating.
Mr. Chairman. Can I make one comment about public comment and ask if folks have handouts, if they provide one more copy to Tony? Because Tony keeps a record of what's handed out of the meetings and it helps us to keep that exactly like it was as submitted. So if they could help in doing that, we'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Clerk. Thank you so much for those comments, and we do need to make sure that that happens. Ordinance relating to the regulation of HUD manufactured mobile homes and parked model homes, pages forty-nine through fifty-seven. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. We want to propose the ordinance for the manufactured mobile home industry. We've taken all the regulations from the various organizations that regulate mobile homes and trying to put it into one location. So we're not having to go to the various areas. I went ahead and handed you the handouts. I know we emailed it to you. But we added something in to it yesterday. There was an incident that a, an installer didn't think he could do some work. So we went ahead and added that in there to clarify that he was able to do that work. The item we added in it was based on removal of a home. We didn't have that in there.
What page are you on?
Three.
Three.
In red?
Yes, sir. We went ahead and clarified that they're able to go ahead and remove a mobile home from the site or demo that. It was not in, it's really an implied task that they're allowed to do. We wanted to go ahead and clarify that, yes, they are allowed to do that. One of the things that we wanted to add in here was on the pre-inspection of the homes on page four. The requirements for used or pre-owned homes before they're moved within the county. We want to go ahead and inspect those homes and make sure that they're habitable and that the citizen that is buying this particular home is getting a home that is habitable for them to move into once it's set up on the property versus setting it up on the property and then trying to make it habitable and costing them an absorbent amount of money. We've taken other areas that were in the land development code on skirting, and we went ahead and put that in this document also. There again, it's in various locations that we have to go ahead and try to identify where the items are at, so we put it in one single document. We went ahead and clarified the inspection procedures, what we're looking at for a first inspection and a final inspection. We went over this with the mobile home community and kind of partnered with them, trying to organize what we're looking for in a mobile home ordinance and what they would be agreeable to. That is pretty much all that we have put into this ordinance.
Mr. Chairman. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Powell, on page four, coming down to item number five, the inspector or approved inspection agency.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be like our, in the insurance business, our, our home inspection companies? Are we going to spell that out?
We've clarified that in the definitions. It's the first item on section three on page two, approved inspection agencies. It's a Florida license holder being a general building or residential contractor, a registered architect engineer, a licensed Florida home inspector, or a mobile home dealer installer, or they can go ahead and pay the building department to perform that inspection also.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Liveau.
Okay, on the same lines, that network that you're speaking of exists, say of in Nassau County, a mobile home was proposed to be taken out of that county and moved into our county. You'll be able to call somebody there to do an inspection to see if it qualifies under this.
Yes, sir.
New ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. And then the other question, what did I have? I think you just covered it. I'm fine.
So there is no requirement for any of these agencies to be registered with us as long as they have the license?
As long as they're licensed. Yeah, we haven't done any registering of them. Most of them will probably be licensed with us, but as long as we do have their information, obviously with the architect engineer, they're going to have a seal. Contractors have a contractor number. We will be able to verify that.
All right, if you'll stay close. Citizens, this is an ordinance of the county relating to the regulation of HUD manufactured mobile homes and parked model homes. This public hearing is now open for public input or comment. Please come. Name and address for the record, please.
Bonnie Carolyn, Drayton Island. When we bought our property up here, at the time we purchased it, we purchased thirty acres. Each, we have three lots. It's, that's combined into one parcel. At that time, the codes were that we could build a main home and a guest home. Well, somewhere after the oh-four hurricanes, we were busy building our home, our main home. That all changed. We, we lost track of the ball. Now we can't put a guest house on larger than a certain square footage. It cannot have a kitchenette in it. Basically, what we can put on our property in addition to the main home is a bedroom in some kind of box form. That's pretty much what has happened. So that's depreciated and affected our property values as to what we can do. It'd been nice to be able to have a little guest cottage where we could have friends over. It's, it's nice to have company, but it's nice to let them have their own space too, if you know what I'm saying. You don't necessarily want them in your house. But you want your friends to come and visit and family. And now we're looking at park models. We've been looking at park models as a way in which to have that guest house. And we don't want to buy a new one. A used one would be nice, but what's happening now is that, yes, we would have to put in electric for it. Yes, we would have to put in proper septic, and we'd pull all the permits for that. But now we're having to deal with an inspection, a pre-inspection. Now we're having to deal with the fact that we're not a mobile home park or an RV place, so we can't even have that. If you look at the trends as to what's going on, people are buying large tracts of lands and putting what they call the tiny houses on them. We're, we're reducing our footprints. So park models come in all shapes and sizes. But the tiny houses are park models for all intents and purposes. Hunters, we have a lot of people that, that have park models put out there on the land that they hunt on. Much nicer than, than putting up some of the things that I'm sure that, that our code enforcement people have seen, shacks literally. So I'm, I'm having an issue with, with the reduction of our utilization and, and the utilization and the, the, our property rights and value. The value of our property is being diminished by these regulatory actions. And, and I don't think that, that having this pre-inspection and this, that, and the other thing is going to work for, for a lot of the citizens here in the county. I just find that the restrictions they're putting on park models and stuff like that's just a little bit punitive and, and it reduces my utilization of my property and our property values.
I think we're raising the standard so that the quality of what's coming into our county, I think if.
Oh, I totally agree.
Obviously, it doesn't apply to you, but if you were the gatekeeper and saw the lack of quality of, of, of these manufactured products coming into our county, then you would probably call us the dump capital because sometimes that's what we're getting. We're getting other counties and other regions, their rejected stuff makes it here somehow.
I, I know. There's got, it's like with the spay neuter issue, there's got to be some kind of a balance.
Exactly.
But in our case, you know, like I said, we're trying to make, and it's whether we're dealing with, with children who need homes or whatever. We're trying to make a one-size-fits-all, and it doesn't always do that. But, but on the backside is that then the county really needs to give those of us that are doing the right thing and doing it correctly, being able to utilize our property and not devalue our property.
And we want you to maximize that, but we also want to build into the equation some degree of consumer confidence and, and also.
I'm not disagreeing. I totally agree with that. But, but there's no backdoor for, for those of us unless we want to pay very high fees and very high, you know, having to go through before the, before the planning boards and stuff, paying seven hundred and fifty dollars to get an exception. Why should we have to do that? We're going to be doing it by the book anyways.
Okay, I don't think.
We wouldn't be buying a, a unit, you know, I mean, I, I understand there are people who are bringing in garbage. There's people who aren't.
I don't, I don't think that that's exactly what we're requiring in our lit.
Okay, well, it says in the thing that we, it can only be in, in a, in a, in a RV park or in a mobile home park for these park models. And so that limits what I'm able to do on my property. Thank you.
Let's hear from our director.
I just want to address the one, the one issue on the pre-inspection. We already do a pre-inspection. However, we're doing it when the home is already set up on site. We want to do it before it moves in so we can go ahead and make sure that what they're moving in here is going to be a habitable home for them to live in and not create undue financial stress on them once they move the, the home into the county.
It's to protect the investment.
Yes, sir.
On the front side. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, and going directly to the, the objection there. Park models, those sorts of things are usually built to RVIA standards. That's RV Industry Association. They're lower even than HUD standards. They're not intended for permanent living accommodations. It's all about codes here. The RVIA standards, RVs are strictly temporary. Then you get up to the HUD standards, which are manufactured homes essentially, which are suitable for permanent living. But they're a lower standard than Florida building codes, and Florida building codes are the best standard. So it's about standards as far as where these things can go, and no, under our codes, we allow one house per lot. You can get a special use permit for, or you can have an accessory dwelling unit if you meet certain standards. And if you want it to be more than one bedroom, you can get a special use permit through the zoning board of adjustment for that.
Thank you very kindly. We're still in public hearing. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak concerning the issue at hand? Mr. Sharar.
Good morning. For those of you who don't recognize me in a suit, Craig Sharar, one forty-seven Pine Tree Road. They're probably going to throw shoes at me when they hear what I got to say. I'm actually for this, and those of you who've been here for a while. Several years ago, I talked about the fact that your lifting of the impact fees was causing nineteen eighty mobile homes to be dumped in the county. So if we'd had impact fees, we wouldn't need the ordinance. But especially the part about the pre-inspections, I've got a lady right now. It all got set up. And now we're having to fight with the mobile home dealer who didn't turn out to be a mobile home dealer. So I applaud the effort. I think it's good. I think that the housing should be better because that's the way we get to be better. And anything that we can do to improve our housing and improve, because it's almost, I mean, this lady's lost her money. There's just no way she's ever going to get it. And if they'd had these kind of inspections, at least there might have been enough time and people looking at the whole transaction, stop that kind of thing. So unlike my normal position of speaking against things, I think this is very good, and I applaud you all for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Sharar. The, that will be well documented.
Very well.
You got that, Tony?
Yeah, that's a Kodak moment there. Public hearing is still open. Any additional public comment? Close the public comment section of the meeting. Commissioner deliberations. District one?
Yes.
Any, any discussion?
Oh, no, I, I think we've worked, had a workshop on this, and I think it's a good move forward, and I'm still for it.
All right, district two.
Kevin, thank you, and staff Brian. What it really means is that person that bought the mobile home, just like Craig's client in Fernandina again. If that thing was pre nineteen seventy-five and they had no idea that it was illegal in every county except Putnam County, now they'll know. We're going to go out or hire somebody at that end to say, no, you can't bring that here. So you didn't waste that consumer's money. You really didn't. So it serves a lot of purposes and it will enhance Putnam County in the long run. Thank you for the hard work.
District four.
Kevin and Brian, thank you so much again. I applaud this thing, and I believe we're going to see better and brighter things when this comes to pass. So thank you very much.
District five.
Again, thank you for your hard work. I went out and met individually with the four notable mobile home salesmen companies in East Palatka, and they gave it high marks. They were very appreciative of this.
Due diligence has been done. You certainly covered all of the bases and circled all of the wagons, and we are extremely grateful. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Go ahead, Larry.
I move approval, sir.
Have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call vote. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three, yes. Unanimous. Thank you all so much. Item nine B, resolution amending section three of exhibit A of two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fee schedule, page fifty-eight.
Specifically, commissioners, the reason this is at this particular point in the agenda is that it needed to be after the ordinance you just passed. This would be a fee that the department would charge to go out and do an inspection if we're called upon to do it. As you can see, the way the ordinance is written, we would prefer that the private entities deal with this, the mobile home dealers, et cetera. But if called upon, we will in a one county, in, in this county or our surrounding counties.
Okay, so as long as the county is contiguous.
Yes.
To us, we will.
Yes.
Elaborate on subject to availability based on current workload and labor force.
Again, it may not be something we can, we will have to schedule it, and we have a limit. And we have a limited number of inspectors. We have been working on that issue by getting everybody as many licenses as we can so they can handle the workload. But we do have a very small number of inspectors. So if we're busy, that may have to go kind of the bottom of the list if we have to run somebody all the way to Daytona or something to make an inspection. So that's why we've encouraged private entities to do this.
So help me to understand, would it be better to say subject to scheduling versus subject to availability because that implies to me that there's a, that if we aren't available, then bye, go get you somebody?
Certainly, we would, that wording would be sufficient for us, yes.
Further discussion?
I do. Mr. Hammons, what is the fee currently? Say I'm a home inspector and I'm inspecting a home in Fernandina Beach, a mobile home. What is the-
Currently, we don't do that inspection. That's what this ordinance is all about.
Right, but the resident gets the permit, gets me and hires me. There's no cost to them to submit that to the county, correct? That report?
No, we're not currently charging a fee.
Okay, thank you. We're only charging if we go out and do the inspection is what I'm trying to get to.
And what I'm saying is that essentially currently there would be no inspection because it would simply be a building permit at that point and whatever inspections we do relative to the building permit. This new inspection would be prior to pulling the building permit to put it on site. This would be just figuring out whether it's roadworthy, whether it's in decent shape to even be brought here. Then we'll worry about the permit once it gets here.
All right, sir.
Further questions? Any comments or questions from the public? I'd like for that availability to become subject to scheduling based on current workload. Any objections to that revision?
I have none.
Entertaining motion to adopt the resolution?
With approval.
Have a proper motion.
Second.
Second, further discussion. District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Three, yes. Carries. Item 10 on the agenda, pages 61 through 69. Mr. Hammons, Planning and Development Services Director in relationship. And again, this is somewhat of a continuation from our previous meeting in reference to signs being placed on property, signs being placed and/or removed on property at 802 South Moody Road. Again, I do want to set some parameters for the discussion. Planning Department obviously is involved. The Spells family is involved and anyone that Mr. Spells has designated to speak adds on his behalf or if someone who is a family member, co-owner of the property, we want to make sure that we have those parameters on the front side. Sometime I'm accused of stopping people from talking. That is not the case. I just want it to be relative to the case. This is not a rally where we're on one bandwagon or the other. So I just want to make sure that we have some order in our proceedings. And so whether you are a supporter of one side or the other, it's not relevant right now. What is relevant is that all of those who are involved in this issue concerning the property, sign placement, sign removal, those are the people that we need to hear from. Thank you so much. Mr. Hammons, there's a memo that you provided to the commissioners with some photos. If you would, please open us up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Hammons, could you pull the mic a little closer? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Yes, sir.
Planning and Development received a complaint concerning signs by the neighbor, Ms. Brenda Bivens of 345 Alabama Avenue, of one of the owners, Ms. Williams of 341 Alabama Avenue of the property. The neighbor said she was calling on behalf of Ms. Williams because she was elderly and could not remove the signs herself and requested assistance. She further stated that no authorization had been given by Ms. Williams to place the signs there. On March 17, 2015, the code officer found two 5x10 signs joined together in a V shape and approximately six 2x2 signs. The large sign exceeded size limitations in the code and would have required a permit due to its size. Signs were also located within the right-of-way in violation of code. The officer removed the large sign as requested and disposed of it. The small signs were left in the back of the officer's truck. On March 23, 2015, the officer drove by the site and found more 2x2 signs on the property, but did not remove them and took photos of them. He took them to Ms. Williams. She then stated that her nephew, who was not identified, had placed them there without permission. Mr. John Spells III later came to Planning and Development Office and complained that the signs had been removed. Mr. Spells claimed that he was the owner of the property and that the 2x2 signs were returned to Mr. Spells by the officer. Upon subsequently researching the ownership of the property, I, being the Planning and Development Director, found that there were actually six persons having ownership interest in the property. The list of owners included Ms. Williams, who is listed first on the property record, and the one to which the tax bill is apparently sent. I incorrectly identified Mr. Spells as John Spells Jr., who is not currently one of the six property owners. Mr. Spells made another visit to Planning and Development Office a few days later, continuing to complain about the removal of the signs on March 17. I shared with him the documents we had. He then produced a driver's license identifying himself as John Spells III. And one of the six owners identified the property records. I apologized to Mr. Spells for mistaking his identity. And at that point, it became clear that staff was involved in a difference of opinion between family members being the owners and staff did nothing further.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hammons, for this memo. Mr. Spells? Mr. John Spells III?
Good morning. Good morning, it's John Spells and Craig Sharar. I'm here appearing on behalf of Mr. Spells. He's here before you to answer any questions that you have. I'm here to make basically legal argument. Let me start off saying I really appreciate you all doing this. I think that you all are going above and beyond anything you need to under the circumstances and I think it shows your concerns for what is happening out there with the public. We all know that the Better Place Money issue is very contentious and that is the starting point for this discussion. We are not dealing with a sign, as is currently all over Putnam County, saying, go to the rodeo. We are dealing with First Amendment rights about a contentious issue that should have been recognized, should have been handled in a very careful manner. To show that, after this whole incident happened, I called Mr. Hammons because Mr. Spells and other people had come to see me. And I said, I need to find out what's going on about this because this is going to be contentious issue and we need to make sure we all act like adults with the signs. The only thing that was told to me during that conversation was that Mrs. Williams owned the property and she asked it to be taken down. Wasn't anything said about in the right-of-way? Wasn't anything said about the sign being oversized? That was it. Now, I've given you a packet, which I hope you've all had a chance to observe. And the reason I bring that up is this. Mr. Hammons, after the fact, had no trouble requiring Mr. Spells to produce a driver's license to prove who he was. But while Mr. Hammons and his department was violating First Amendment rights, and there's a thing called the firstness of the First Amendment. It is the most important amendment. It gives us the right to speak. It gives us the right to worship the way we want. The First Amendment is highly protected. Mr. Hammons violates his First Amendment rights, but also confiscates private property. Now, in code enforcement, they know that they have limitations and they are subject to constitutional search and seizure. They cannot just go on people's property. Because of the nature of the issue, when he was out there making the decision to do this, he should have made the decision, well, let's find out who owns this property. Before he even found out there was an issue about ownership, code enforcement should find out who owns the property. That's basic. Because Ms. Williams calling up and saying that there was a problem, who's she? Maybe she doesn't own the property. And I, these are screenshots from the property appraisers. Unfortunately, they don't print out the way they should. But all you need to do to find out who owns a piece of property in Putnam County is do this. You either put in the name, all right, let's put in Cora Williams. We get two pieces of property. We could have put in 802 South Moody Road, in which only one piece of property would have shown up. But if we had done that, we would have seen Williams, Cora, B, et al. And I'm sure that we all know that et al. means and others. If we click on the tab, we get this page, which says, once again, Cora B. Williams, et al., and then gives an address at some other location. If you click on the tab that says Sales, this gives you the deed history. Now, it's not chain of title. It's not something you write title insurance on, but it's at least the honest effort of the property appraiser to make out there in the records who owns the property. And the realtors use this. Everybody uses this. It's a good starting point. You get this page. If you bother to click on the deeds, which these are highlighted, so you can click on them and it sends you right straight to the deeds. On the deed recorded at 134026 is the one from John B. Spell Jr. to John B. Spells III and two other people. And the deed just before that one is the one that goes from Cora Williams to three other people. Clearly, any attempt at due diligence would have revealed that there was an issue, but it was all after the fact. And this is the problem that you have. There's a concept in the First Amendment litigation called prior restraint. And the best way to claim prior restraint is back in the olden days when everybody used to fight pornographic movies, the sheriff couldn't go kick the door down, confiscate the film, and say it's pornographic. That's prior restraint. You had to have a court determine that the movie is pornographic and then you can stop the showing of it. And for those of you remember the Pentagon Papers, that's why the Pentagon Papers got published, because the government couldn't stop the New York Times from publishing them. First, you had to have a hearing by a judge to determine whether or not they could not be done. That's what the First Amendment is all about. So we have prior restraint. He went down, him and his people went down, took the sign down in violation of the First Amendment, no due process. Second of all, they took the sign. They physically took the property. Government can't come in on anybody's property and just take something. Now, he could say, well, we didn't know, but he didn't know because he chose not to know, as I've just gone through the explanation. Third, spoliation of evidence. There is a concept in Florida law that if there is evidence of something that can be used at court and you destroy it, you're responsible for the value of what the person would have gotten had you not spoiled or destroyed the evidence. Now, remember I said Mr. Hammons never said anything about the sign being too big? Very interesting. They took pictures of the front of the sign. Why didn't they take pictures of the back of the sign? Because the sign was on a piece of plywood. And I know there's at least three of you up there know, if not all of you up there know, that a sheet of plywood is four by eight. And if you take a picture and it's a sheet of plywood, it's four by eight. You can say it's anything that you want to say, it's four by eight. Why are they making this up? And the spoliation of the evidence is, they could have saved it and we would have it before you today with a tape measure. But even more importantly than that, let's look at the pictures that Mr. Hammons took. This is page 63 of your all's packet. This sign is held up by 4x4s, which we all know really aren't 4x4s. If you measure that 4x4 and you graph it across the bottom of that sign, you don't end up with 10 feet. Why did he make up what it was? Now, which also in conjunction with that, if they had to destroy the evidence, they do have things that take pictures and they do have tape measures. Now, he said he needed to take it down because it was in the right-of-way. And it is true, if it is in the right-of-way, which is public property, which is basically owned by y'all, you can take them down. And there's not an issue about that. But you better be sure, when you're taking people's property and violating their First Amendment rights, that it really is in the right-of-way. Now, John isn't here, so he can't back me up on this, but I think that we all know that the right-of-way is generally delineated by what's called the outside edge of the sidewalk. Inside on right-of-way is going towards the center of the road, outside is going away from the center of the road. So the outside edge of the sidewalk is generally at the edge of the right-of-way. And the reason we put sidewalks at the edge of the right-of-way is because we want people walking as far away from the traveled way as possible. We don't want them up close. And that's why, if you look at this picture, which is number 63, we see that we have a road, a curb and gutter, a swale, a sidewalk, and a utility pole. And those utility poles are also pretty good markers. They may not be 100%, but you know what? If you see something outside of the utility line, you ought to start thinking to yourself, maybe this isn't in the right-of-way. Maybe I ought to get a surveyor. So if you look at page 63 and you look at page 64, clearly the sign is outside of the right-of-way. Clearly.
That's based on a survey?
Say again?
That's based on a survey, your last comment?
It's based upon the pictures that he used and he has not produced a survey to say that it was in the right-of-way.
What are you producing to say that it's outside the right-of-way?
Well, you know what, Mr. Castleberry? You're proving my point.
Address the commission, please, with the response to the question from council.
The response to the question is this. If he's going to take somebody's property, he better be sure he has a basis in law. Where's his survey? There you go.
Okay.
And you want to know something? Where, I don't know, is your help of it surrounded?
Okay, okay.
Anybody in here that thinks that outside of the sidewalk is inside the right-of-way?
I'm not going to guess about where right-of-ways start and stop. Again, without it being surveyed, I can look at the picture and I can certainly form an opinion, but that doesn't get us any closer to resolution today. Let's focus on resolution. Keep talking, keep talking.
We'll be more than happy to have the county perform a survey to prove that Mr. Hammons is right.
Okay, keep talking, sir.
Okay. There was, you know, there is a survey though, because in the prior meeting, Mr. Spells just reminded me, in your all's packet, you have a copy of, you know, the county's been trying to get a hold of Moody Road in that area.
For the sidewalk. They did the survey on the area that they wanted to actually put the sidewalk. I had signs beyond that and they actually took them down. So there is a little bit of record of a survey.
Y'all have a copy of the packet he gave you, I think, at the last meeting?
The last meeting of where the county had marked everything off? Okay, well, right beyond that, there's a post that was right at the edge of the driveway behind where the county actually wanted for the sidewalk. It was signs nailed up there, they actually removed.
Okay, I have, if y'all don't have this packet, I only have one copy of it, I can give it to you, but here, this is a packet that the county put together to give to Mr. Spells about purchasing property.
They want to donate the property for the sidewalk.
And there are stakes that they put in the ground. Now, it is State Road 20 that we're dealing with down here, but if you draw that line down there and then you take a look at the pictures on page 63 and 64, as far as east-west, it was not in the Moody- it was not in the Moody Road right of way. So now the only question is, is it in the State Road twenty right of way? Do y'all have this, or do I need to give this to you?
I gave them in the last meeting.
We don't have it currently.
The State Road twenty, um, running east and west.
Correct.
And so the state, the state right of way would cover State Road twenty, of course, and then county right of way on Moody.
Yeah, correct. But the, the direction that you move the right of way on Moody Road is east and west, because it's north-south road.
Correct.
If anybody needs extra copies of this, we can give it to, to me.
Yes, you can, you can give it to her, our counsel. Hold, hold, hold one second, please, counsel.
Are we talking about Moody Road or Alabama?
We talking about both, no, we talking about Moody Road. I don't know where Alabama got involved in that.
Alabama is the nine-one-one address for Ms. Cora Williams.
But that's where we're talking.
That's not where the signs.
No, the reason Alabama comes up is because Mrs. Williams lives on Alabama, not on Moody Road, which is also interesting.
Okay, uh.
Um, I'm, yeah, I'm going to wrap this up, and then I'll let him. Okay, then let me, let me sum up. You know, fifty years ago was the anniversary of the March on Salem.
The March on what?
Salem. Selma, Selma. And that is often characterized as a white-black issue. I don't characterize that as a white-black issue. I characterize that as a government-citizen issue. Because the government of the state of Alabama was the people that were trying to stop whites and blacks from exercising their First Amendment rights of association. And y'all know, I come in here and I get very adamant about this, but you know what? The thing is this. Government is the, supposed to be the protector of our rights. And with great power comes great responsibilities. And that's not what happened in this case. And you know what? There's nothing to stick the genie back in the bottle. Because this was a First Amendment issue. We aren't talking about Edith Joe's. We're talking about having people decide how they should vote on something. And if I had the ability after the fact, because a bunch of us got together before these signs went up, and I told everybody, you better be sure these things aren't in the right of ways, because we had a big argument about First Amendment. And I said, you've got First Amendment rights. You don't have First Amendment rights in the right of way. That's the public right of way. They own it, and they can do what they want. You need to keep that thing out of the, and we all talked about that. And then to have this happen? Total, at the best, gross negligence. I have never seen a code enforcement case, a regular code enforcement case, handled like this. You know, I've been dealing with code enforcement in this county since about two thousand and four. I find those people over there in code enforcement, I don't agree with what they do, I don't like what they do, but they have a job. It's a recognized job, and they generally tend to do a pretty good professional job at doing it. I don't really know the new crew, but, you know, Kathy and Andre and Lisa, they tend to do a good job, and they try to do their job. They don't do it perfect, but they try. I'm astonished that this happened, knowing that. Because this is not about, let me back up. It doesn't make any difference what Mrs. Williams said. There is no cover in the argument that we were trying to help a citizen. Because I've got things I need help with. When you're the government and you start helping the citizens, you are still subject to those same qualifications. If a citizen tells you to take something down, and you shouldn't have taken it down, and it's First Amendment, you can't cover, oh, we made a mistake because somebody told us something wrong. When you're asking people who, this man, how many times y'all seen him in here? Lots and lots of times. How many times you seen in here? Lots and lots of times. He speaks all the time. He knows who he is. To jerk him around by making him show his driver's license? And you don't have the courtesy to go and look up on your own computer? I don't know what the fix is, ladies and gentlemen. Because you can't take this back. But something's got to be done, so it won't be done in the future. I think Mr. Spells has a few things he'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sharar. Mr. Spells?
One thing I want to say is, even when I brought it to your attention about, you know, in which you spoke about the property line, the way the survey line at, but I don't recall that it's for the vote yes signs being nailed on light poles everywhere. I went out to Federal Point, I seen them nailed on light poles. Right by your funeral home, I seen it. Right there in front of Huntley Brothers, right by Eleventh Street. Everywhere I looked, even in East Palaca, I don't know who had a high ladder, but they always nailed them up high. But I would always put mines in certain areas, even on seventeen. I still ask the cows today who pulled a sign down and throwed it in the pasture. But nobody ain't said nothing. But I looked like, you know, even though we didn't, even though it did go through, it don't matter. But the principle of the things that people actually have to go through just to actually have their right, I find it very wrong the way they went and done what they did on Moody Road. And regardless of what anybody else in the family think, I feel like I had a right to at least do what I felt was right for the people that can't hardly make it as it is paying taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Spell. Let me ask a question. As of right now, who actually are the owners of eight oh two South Moody Road?
We all tied into it.
Name the we.
My sister, well, my sister, my Aunt Lily, my Aunt Cora, my cousin Tracy, and her husband. So it's several of us involved.
Okay, so, uh, let's go back to the top. So stay close. The original complaint concerning the signs was by Ms. Cora's neighbor, Ms. Brenda Bivins, who happened to be here. Uh, Ms. Bivins?
So she was the complainant.
No. Ms. Bivins, will you come for just a moment, please? Uh, again, apparently, her next-door neighbor, who is your Aunt Cora, uh, gave her some instructions, but she's of age. We're going to let her speak for herself as it relates to, uh, Ms. Bivins, we have your address. It's three forty-five Alabama Avenue, Palaca. Is that correct?
It is, and my name is Brenda Bivins. Uh, Cora, uh, asked me.
Cora Williams.
If I would call the court enforcement and have the signs removed for two reasons. One, she had not given anyone permission to put the signs there, which that's what happens when any signs go up. They always contact Cora to get permission. Those who don't, she asked for the signs to be taken down, and they are. She had not given permission, and she disagreed with what they said by calling the elected officials scammers, breaking the law, and being immoral. So she didn't agree with what was on the sign as well as the signs being there. She asked me to call and get them removed, and I did. Just like in the past, I've done the same thing for her. Anything, signs went up there, church signs, political signs, any signs that went up there, and they didn't have permission. She asked me to have them removed. I called the court enforcement, and they removed them at her request.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bivins. Commissioner Harris? Ms. Harris, or Ms. Bivins, don't leave just yet. Ms. Harris has a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question. Why didn't she call? Why did she ask you to call?
She, she never does. Cora is very, um, not upfront. She's very secretive, and she doesn't speak out. Which is why I don't think she even told her nephew, because she doesn't like confrontation. And she doesn't step forward.
Okay, so her sister, another sister is here. Was she involved in any way, shape, form, or fashion?
No, I don't think so. I think she was there when Cora asked me to do. I'm not really sure, but she.
She was there when code enforcement come there. She said, and what she said, like, she said, they did not call code enforcement. Code enforcement came there. So, but, my question to you, did you not have a vote yes sign in your yard?
I did.
Okay, then I rest my case.
I did.
I rest my case.
Okay, that's no relative, that, that's not relative, and I, oh, okay, listen, listen, listen. Listen. What Ms. Bivins have in her yard has no relativity to this case that we're talking about today. Ms. Bivins was following the directive of Ms. Cora Williams, which is your aunt. So it sounds to me, just as was indicated, uh, on this letter, that it became clear that staff was involved in a difference of opinion between family members, which are the owners of the property. Again, this is, I'm not defending the department, because the department has issued you an apology. But what I am saying, gosh, I wish you all would just pay attention when you're not the ones, you know. What we have here is that Ms. Cora B. Williams, et al., is listed there. Her home address is listed there. Ms. Cora Williams, one of the co-owners there, uh, indicated, and apparently this has been something that Ms. Bivins has done over the years when people have put signs up, and that's why we got to get the full story. If this was the first time this situation had happened, then, you know, it would be some concerns. I think this time what's making it different is one of the owners, uh, wanted a specific sign, and the other owner didn't want the sign. And apparently the right hand and the left hand don't know what's going on. Did your Aunt Cora deny? Did she say that she wanted to?
Deny, and we go to church every Sunday at the same church, and when I questioned her on it, she didn't know anything about it. Now, I don't know how all of a sudden now she's incompetent to where she can't tell me, uh, notify code enforcement for herself, to where she got to take it upon somebody that's in favor of it. But you know, all of a sudden, all the mines got to come down. But you see, she didn't notify her when it was time to pay the taxes, and I volunteered and spent my money. So I feel like, you know, that she's just stepping over my head, doing what Cora telling her when Cora can actually come and talk to me herself. She see me every Sunday in church. So that's where I'm getting, I'm having a problem now.
Well, well, again, it's crystal clear that there are some family matters, uh, that, uh, we should not really be involved in. However, we are involved in. Ms. Lily, do you have anything to add to this from the family perspective? Come forward, please, ma'am.
Is this lady one of the?
Yes, sir.
I think she should be here, absolutely.
If you state your name, your name and address for the record.
Mel McNeil.
All right.
I was startled when the gentleman knocked on the door. We, I didn't know the signs were up there. To be, to be honest with you, I did not know they were up there. And I did not know who had put them up there. I didn't, you know, matter of fact, that was after everything else was said. And so I apologize that, uh, that we're in the midst of something that we are totally, you know, not aware of, you know. And I, I've never known, as long as we've lived, we've lived there for years. We have never had a family argument. When the stake came to us, we opened our doors. And we felt that, uh, it's for progress, and we stand for progress, not for arguments.
Okay, so, in other words, the signs that were on the property, you all didn't know that your nephew had pretty much approved the signs going there?
No, we did not know that.
So you just thought?
Had we known it, then we'd be knowledgeable. Somebody wouldn't have to come to the door and tell us that, do you know some signs up there? I didn't know the signs were there. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be honest, and that, and that's not refuting. Cora did not know they were up there either.
Yes, she did. I told her.
No, after, yeah, you told, after you told her.
Yeah.
Okay, after, after, uh,
Okay.
After he told her, after he came to us with the whole argument. And she said, I really do not want to get in, in, in government affairs. And this is, she said, now, uh, after, after he came, she said, well, you do what you have to do. Whatever you were obligated to do. And she had let it go at that.
Mr. Chairman?
We knew nothing about the signs until we were informed the next day, after they were put up.
Okay, thank you.
I was shocked when he knocked on the door and say, we, I'm from court enforcement. And we had no, there were no calls. And my sister did not know that, you know, that, uh, they were really up. And see, so happened, I was there when, you know, everybody come, if there's a notice that, uh, something had come up, somebody looking for the persons who actually lived there, they would come to the door. And so that's how we, we went to know, once some, this no, this no offense to my nephew now, and my, I love my dear brother, and it's, it's his son. And I, I would be the last person to stand up, to argue.
Excuse me, one minute, Ms. McNeil. Your voices are carrying, and while we're trying to hear Ms. McNeil, we're getting, you know, others that are murmuring in the back. Please give her the respect and us.
Well, I certainly appreciate, you know, this, this coming to the forefront, because we don't own anything in this land. It's all, it all belongs to God, whether we admit it or not. And you know what? I don't have a six-feet promise to me. But after it's all over, it's be over. I'm not going to be worried about it. But I just don't like, you know, we don't like conflict, nor does my, uh, nor does my sister like it. God bless her soul, that's my twin sister. So, you know, I wouldn't go against her either. You know, so anyway, I wouldn't try to go against my nephew. And I love him, and I can stand here and witness to God today, and thank God for, you know, for his presence. He come to church, and he's out. He need to be out. I can't be here now. But I, I won't, I, I do want him to be respected too. And I wouldn't try to go against anything. If there's any conflict, I'm glad that we are here to open up the conflict, so you will know that there are no conflicts with us. We've always had peace. But yet still, it takes somebody to keep us straight at our age. And if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be straight today. And I bet you, I know, I, I know to come to meetings and to know what's going on, then we won't have to get second-hand information. And see, there's a lot of misconceptions in that article that was written. And I pray to God that somebody would take a look at that and retract those statements, because they're completely out of order. Okay.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Harvey, thank you.
Ms. McNeil?
Thank you.
Ms. McNeil, can I ask you a question, please? I'm a little confused on, you said they came to your door and knocked on your door. Who came to your door and knocked on your door?
Uh, the, 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 code, code, uh, the code person.
After the phone?
I didn't know who the code person was.
Okay, was that after the phone call, Ms. Bivins, or before?
Yes, that was, I had made the phone call for Cora, as instructed. The signs had been removed, and they had.
And then they came to the door?
No.
No.
They came, the signs came back, only more of them. That's when they came to the door and, and let Cora know that the signs were back.
They were illegal.
That's when, that's when Cora, uh, told them, uh, that her her nephew had put them there, and that they could remove them.
All right, so the first phone call, Ms. Bivins, you made, and the sign got removed.
Yes.
The second time was when codes enforcement drove by and probably saw the signs and came knocking on the door. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that clear.
That's exactly what happened.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And after, after they came, well, I, I think that's it. That, that's it. That's exactly what happened.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. You all can have a seat for just a moment. I want to talk with staff about some things. Counsel. Uh, when there are multiple owners of property, first name does not give it any rank, but it does kind of indicate who the, uh, front-runner is to get the tax bill.
I wouldn't say that, but I think it's certainly reasonable for someone to look at a property record and see a person listed as first and take it that they have the authority to deal with that property.
What is your recommendation as it relates to the et al. for the future? Because again, this is history, uh, history that we certainly didn't, um, wasn't interested in making. But what do we do? What do we adjust?
The, the signs that were in the right of way are, are non-issue. We clearly have the right to take those. I suppose in the future, especially in the political context or political speech context, we should be more careful in determining whether there are multiple owners, and, uh...
Okay, all right. He'll repeat what he said. Thank you for the observation.
I said, for the future, I suppose, in cases where there are multiple owners, and especially if we're dealing with political speech or political signs, we should be more careful in determining who all the owners are. And, uh, or if, or if somebody's authorized to deal with that, on that specific piece of property. Otherwise, we will probably leave them up and let, let the, uh, co-owners fight about whether they stay up or not. Otherwise, we will probably leave them up and let, let the co-owners fight about whether they stay up or not. But I, I, I agree with quite a bit of what Mr. Sharar said regarding First Amendment rights, et cetera. Again, the signs in the right of way, no issue, signs on private property. I don't think it was unreasonable of staff to see that the owner, an owner of the property had called, and one of the signs removed, but now it's been brought to our attention that that doesn't always work, that we'll be more careful about getting consensus from the property owners, and if not, probably just leave it alone.
Director, any closing comments? Okay, Mr. Spell, according to the commentary, you received an apology concerning the fact, it's not that the director didn't know you, but he know you as John Spell, he didn't know whether you were senior junior or the third. Did you accept his apology?
Well, I ain't got no choice from the way it looked like it's going in the corner, but my, my point of it is, you know, you keep, he keep repeating right of way, but if you look, those signs was not in the right of way. But you ignoring the fact that anytime you nail a vote yes sign on a light pole, there's several violations there. That puts it more in the right of way than my signs being off the road, you know, as far as it was from the sidewalk.
Okay, let me make sure the record reflect, the car flag didn't put no signs up?
I understand that.
Take no signs down?
I understand that, but Mr. Flag, you had one right on the light pole by your funeral home too.
I didn't have one.
I understand, wait a minute, I'm saying.
Let's make sure the record is clear.
I'm just saying, it was one on the pole by your funeral home. But if code enforcement can go out of their way to keep removing mine, why didn't they look at some of the light poles and remove some of them?
Well, all signs on utility poles are out of compliance, and, and, and it's certainly frowned upon because it does create a situation for those utility workers who go up and down. This has been an exercise to teach everybody concern, whether it's legislators, whether it's administrators, whether it's those out in the field, how we need to be conscious, alert, and aware of what needs to happen, especially when you have emotionally charged issues, political issues, et cetera, there. When there's an et al. there, we certainly need to do a little bit more due diligence to make sure that, because it's very seldom that you can please six people on an issue unless they've gotten together ahead of time and, and, and got an agreement. So just as Mrs., just as Aunt Lily is, is saying here, I think for all concerned, issues with your, your family's property, my family's property, where my siblings are listed, that we do need to have a little powwow, so that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. We're not trying to justify, not trying to cover over any of the details that has been presented. Like I say, we can't rewind the tape, and I certainly appreciate the way you have presented, the way Mr. Sharar has presented the case, and that's why we brought it forward to this meeting, so that we could vet it in a public forum, so that everybody will know that from start to finish there. And, and Cora is, is a person who's, who's trying to keep peace with all concern, and so she's not gonna take a public stand on anything. That's just not her style, she's very modest there, but we all know better, and when we know better, we all ought to do better.
Yeah, but my thing of it is, if there is something going on within the family, you don't drag in outside help to take care of the problem, you talk within the family. But my thing of it, what really gets me, it was more of a political thing, and what really grits me down to the bone is to go and see her have a vote yes sign in her yard, and then, you know, promoting taking down the vote no sign, because I look at it like this here, you know, you take care of what's at your house, and let me take care of what's in my area. But you know, to just go to the extreme of just constantly making it look like the vote yes, and then the way she was saying that it was more of a degrading point of having the sign, everybody is entitled to their opinion. Now, any, and any different thing, if there's something being done, eventually if you look at the news, they'll call it a scam, okay? Well, I see it the same way, but that's just my opinion. But for her to just more like use it as such a degrading word to where, you know, it, it, it should be illegal, but just have a, a sign saying yes in her yard, then I might feel the opposite of that, but I respect hers. But don't just go and try to remove mine due to the fact that it's not going the way you want to see it.
Are you denying that Aunt Cora told her to call in the first place?
Well, from what I was told by Aunt Cora, she didn't know nothing about none of that until the man came to the door.
Okay, well, okay, again, everybody in this room could have an opinion. I think we well-vetted this case. I think there's teachable moments for the family, teachable moments for the county, and we all need to rise up above this. We can't rewind the tape and do this over again, but I think it's been well-vetted. Are there any others, Ms. Bonnie, you had filled out a card. I don't know what your relationship is to the case. There, were you there when the signs were placed or this? Okay, I really don't want opinions, because we actually have a specific case. You can bring an opinion back concerning signs and things of that nature at a subsequent meeting. Anybody who is not directly related to this particular case, I'd rather not have any testimony there, because Mr. Spell brought a valid concern to this commission. We have listened, or you had adequate counsel who, who, who has presented this as precise as possible. Our director has come, he's acknowledged the chain of events there based on his staff, his knowledge and understanding of it. Our counsel has responded, they've complemented each other, and we need to move forward and let yesterday be gone, and don't repeat anything that should not be repeated.
But all the time, Mr. Flag, we got to stop sweeping this dirt under the rug, 'cause see, as you keep sweeping dirt in the rug, after a while, become a tripping stumbling stone.
Tell me what dirt, Mr. Spell, that's been swept under the rug today.
So in other words, you telling me what they done was actually acceptable?
That's not what you heard Carl Flag say.
Well, then, that's what you saying, you just said more like let bygones be bygone. But you know, even, wait a minute, let me finish. Even when I went there with Mr. K. Moore, Ms. Fay, and other people, the code enforcement, they gave me the runaround. But when it all boils down, after it did fall into slap and I showed them who I was, then it was okay for me to go put the signs back up. Now, how can you say you upholding the law as far as removing my signs twice, even the signs with private property, no trespassing, and then vote no? You pull them up and throw them on the truck too, but then I got to come and get them out the back of the truck here.
The record reflects that there was an apology for mistaking your identity, and it also was noted, duly noted, that it was clear that staff was involved in a difference of opinion between family members. That is why if we did not have this meeting today and didn't just have an opportunity for you to come forward, for our director, department to come forward, neighbor, sister to come forward, then you can consider us trying to cover something up. But for us to spend the time that we've spent on this, there is no cover up. It's a vetting of processes and procedures, and an opportunity for the county to adjust what we do, and an opportunity for families, not just the Spell family, 'cause my family is no different than your family. Or we have differences of opinion, and there are times that I may do something that they don't know about, and they find it after the fact, and they have an issue with it. So this is not in any way, shape, form, or fashion putting adverse light on the Spell family there, because again, I've known you and your family and all, as long as I've known me. So all I'm saying is, we cannot repeat that. That referendum is over. We have learned, we can do better when we learn better, if we choose to do better. So give us the benefit of the doubt to say, everybody learned a lesson, and we can move forward. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, well, one, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, when people come into code enforcement and talking to Mr. Hammond about the issue, it need not to be no one else to interrupt in that conversation.
Yes, sir.
Because I had that problem with the game warden. Now, if I'd have seen the game warden along the road and asked him about who removed my signs, he couldn't have told me nothing. But I go in and see Mr. Hammond, and then the game warden take the conversation over. So I would, myself, would really appreciate when a person go into a building to handle their business, let them be able to deal with that individual that come in without anybody else interfering.
I couldn't agree with you anymore, and if that happened, I apologize to you, and you can count on the fact that if it's outside folk, that is not a part of that department that's engaging or in conversation, that that is duly noted, and that that is not acceptable. So thank you so much for your commentary, and thank you all for your attention to this matter. Ms. Diane, you had something that you wanted to say? Okay, you gotta come up here and say it.
I was just gonna say, the first day that, 'cause I went with John and Mr. K. Moore down to codes enforcement, they couldn't tell us anything about who had called that in, and five of them come to that window like, you know, we were a bunch of criminals or something, looking down at us, and...
Keep your focus on us.
Yeah, the signs were not on the right of way.
Okay.
And the signs were painted over twelo signs from the previous campaign, which was just coroplast, which was the four foot by whatever. And I want to know why the better place, the ones that we put up, were removed when Travis Hudson signs that are down here on seventeen that are still up, same exact size, why was ours considered oversized when they're the same size as what the others are? Which is, and that should be in the packet that you have.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's all that was, but they treated John like he was a criminal, that whole department down there that day, and he's in here every day, and this man knows who he is.
Thank you, Ms. Diane. We're gonna take a three-minute recess, yes, ma'am, Ms. Barkman.
April 12th, I happened to be right next door to a meeting. I came out and I saw John's truck there. I walked down there, and let me tell you something, they treated him like he was nothing. The game warden stood behind him and this other man here. Let me tell you something, the game warden said to him, "We don't know who you are." He said it three times, and John said, "I'm not talking to you, I'm trying to talk to him," meaning Mr. Hammond's. He was disrespected very bad that day, and I'm sorry, he owes more than an apology.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barkman. We're gonna take a three-minute recess, and then we'll be back.
Larry Gess.
We go to item 11, County Administrator Rick Leary, for issues and appointments. Mr. Larry?
Mr. Chairman, we just, I hope that one member of the board is prepared to appoint someone to the Citizens Advisory Task Force, because they really need to convene a meeting before your next meeting, so that we can have a public hearing leading to the filing of an application for a CDBG Economic Development Grant to serve an industry here in the county. So if you can, somebody is prepared to make an appointment, that board, that committee will be complete, and they can have a meeting, which is required prior to the public hearing. And we did send you out a list of potential appointees.
Anyone?
You need to see the list?
Yes, yes. I didn't know anyone on the list, Mr. Leary, I reviewed it.
Did you see it?
No names I recognized.
Well, I mean, I understand that you may not know any of the individuals, but the key thing is that you did appoint, I believe, a Ms. McElwain from that list. She met the criteria, and the key thing here is getting somebody from, who meets the criteria, and those people on that list would meet the criteria.
And I appointed her, correct?
You did, yes.
And I appointed Mrs. Long.
What about the Mrs. Seitz out in Anilarken? Could we appoint her?
You make a motion. You know her?
I do, I can give her a call, but should we just go ahead and appoint her?
Yeah, I mean, that would, that, that way, that would, you know, that would constitute the committee. We could convene it, and then she could, you know, if for some reason she can't fulfill that responsibility, we can do another appointment later.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mary Ann Seitz at 115 Kelvin Avenue in Anilarken, Florida, to the CDBG Citizens Advisory Task Force.
Proper motion.
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we oppose, and your motion carries. Any fair authority appointments?
I have one, well, let's go District One first, I'm sorry.
I have one, I'd like to reappoint Robbie Shoal.
Okay, District Two?
I have Mrs. Vicky Miles, to replace Charlie Matthews, has moved out of state.
Okay, District Four?
I have none right now.
District Five?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Jay Browning to another term.
Okay, District One, Two, and Five have appointments, Robbie Shoal, Vicky Miles, and Jay Browning. Can I take a motion to approve the three?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, your motion carries, that'll just leave the District Three and Four. Okay, Library Board appointments?
I spoke with Mr. Crowley yesterday, and he is diligently working, and said he would have someone for me by the next meeting. Because I did not know anybody, I had to explain to him about the boundaries.
District Four, anybody?
I have none.
Okay. What else, Mr. Leary?
I have nothing else, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Castleberry?
No items today, sir.
Clerk of the Court?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to thank all of you that attended the open house of the courthouse week before last. We had a great event, and a lot of folks in the audience came and visited, we appreciate that. But I was very remiss when I made my remarks at the beginning of that in not properly recognizing the contributions that the Putnam County IT Department made in that whole effort. Their director, Mr. John Rungrin, and especially Mark Hayes, who was the network engineer, were instrumental in all that work, and I wanted to certainly make sure that I recognize them, as we did with Mr. Leary and all the commissioners that were supportive of that. And so I'm trying to make amends for that oversight on my part, to recognize those two gentlemen. Their contributions were invaluable to that progress, and I want to thank them publicly. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Yes, sir, thank you, clerk. And again, we commend your leadership for the renovations and the enhancements, all for our general public. A lot of times, people think courthouse, and they think, hmm, people who've done things wrong, but the people who are doing things right need the courthouse, and so...
Well, most people do think that, and, but I will tell you, the vast, the majority of folks that come into that building needing access to the courts are not criminals.
Exactly.
And it's a way you resolve issues, just like the discussion y'all had today, and that's the place. So it's not really about the criminal element, it's about the citizens that need that access, and that's why we move forward to try to provide an efficient and effective access to the court. So you're right in that, and I thank you for those comments.
Sir, District Five?
Yes, sir.
You're next.
I am.
Caught him off guard.
Well, um, golly, I, I don't know of anything happening, it's, I'm, I'm brain dead, sorry.
I'll carry his water for him.
District Four?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently had a big save robin bass tournament a few weeks ago, and over a hundred and seventy trucks and trailers were there, over three hundred fishermen, and a big impact for Putnam County there. We had trucks lined up all the way from Camwood down to 315. It was a huge outpouring of support. Also, tomorrow morning at 7:30, the Neighborhood Walmart will have its grand opening out in Anilarken, and that's providing about thirty-eight jobs right now for the community. And Diana Conger is the store manager, is looking for great things to be done in West Putnam. So at 7:30 tomorrow morning, if everybody's got time to come out, they're on Highway 20 across from Hitchcock's Plaza. Neighborhood Walmart will have a grand opening, and will open their doors for eight o'clock. I also want to say, it's not just about them opening. I asked the contractor the other day, you hear all the horror stories about coming to Putnam County and building, and the contractor couldn't have been more appreciative of our building department, how they bent over backwards to make sure that this business could come in on schedule and do all the things that they needed. Personally, I got involved the other day because of a Department of Agriculture issue, and I made a few calls to Mr. Hammond's, and, I mean, you couldn't have asked for more cooperation to get the, just a few documents that they needed cleaned up, and by just a few hours, it was all done and put to bed. So I, I just really want to say, you hear the horror stories, but, I mean, I'm asking, and it's just not there, and, and I really appreciate, Mr. Hammond's, your department... and it's just not there, and, and I really appreciate Mr. Hammond's, your department, in helping them get, get set up, because every business that we bring brings another business and brings another, and it's just a domino effect, and that's just really, I want to sing your praises on that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. District Four, District Two.
Okay, well, you skip over yourself? You can do that, can't you? I want to thank the organizers of the Ladies Babe Ruth Fast Fish Softball Association. Last week, they held a, really a statewide tournament, and the triangle complex was just, there was a thousand people out there, just teamwork, and couldn't have been more proud of. Commissioner Harvey Pelissero and myself went out and met with the folks that put it on, and we stayed for a little while, and it was, it was really good, and they filled up the restaurants and hotels throughout our county like no other sport does, I have to say. Even bass tournaments, they kind of rival them, don't they? And with that being said, this Saturday is going to be very exciting down at the riverfront. For the first time in a long time, although not the first time, there's going to be a bass tournament and the annual mug race take off the same morning. So if you're an early riser, you can catch the, at safe light around 7:00 a.m., you can catch the bass fishermen leaving the city dock, going out through the river, and then from 7:30 to 10:30, you can catch all the departing sailboats starting the mug race that runs all the way to Jacksonville. So it's going to be an exciting time again this weekend, like the whole spring is in Putnam County. We have plenty of events in the spring, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
It's wonderful, I feel so honored to, for us to be represented in so many different places at the same time.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
District One.
I guess the biggest effort I've worked in lately is trying to keep ride solution together and transportation disadvantaged. We did do a survey and ride and talk to people and see who used it, and we've put together a booklet with those people and how long they've used it, where they go, and the problem is getting rides to go fill prescriptions or to go to the grocery store and to remain self-sufficient. The, the rides to the doctor's office are covered, but what's been cut out are those extra trips, and it's going to be so expensive for those people to have to make, other arrangements or go into nursing homes. And we've been working with that, and we're speaking with other counties that are facing the same thing and trying to build some momentum. So it's, it's really difficult, and it's something that we really don't want to lose. Pretty good team of people working with me, and I appreciate all of them, thanks.
And we appreciate, you know, your efforts as well, because again, it's, it's about the team that we have representing our county. Want to be one of the first to commend, Commissioner Walt Pelissero has finished his advanced county commission courses, and will be actually graduating with honors in, in June.
Yes, sir.
And I have one additional class to take, and the graduation is only once a year, so it'll be next year that Flag plans to be graduating, but it's very commendable, the learning process to make us better so that we can make our county better. We heard earlier in the proclamation that was presented about the law enforcement memorial coming up on May the 7th at Ravine Gardens at 10:00 a.m. Also, that is National Day of Prayer, and there will be prayer services going on all day throughout, and it'll culminate at Dunn's Creek Baptist Church at 7:00 p.m. There's actually a prayer service that's, that's going on there, and so we invite all of those who choose there, the community will be well-represented with various individuals throughout the county being there. So, so thank you again so much for that. This, the days to come, we have a lot of meetings that, that are being planned, whether it's related to budget, whether it's related to landfill, whether it's related to gasification, all of those meetings are coming, we're looking forward to that, we're asking everybody to do your homework, and let's continue to move us forward. Anything else to come before this commission? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, since Nancy and I, or Commissioner Harris and I cannot talk privately, those of you know we've been, the four county commissioners from Bradford, Clay, Alachua, and Putnam are meeting in Melrose the last Monday of each month. Yesterday, we met again, and transportation was the big topic on the table. On June 3rd, we're going to be meeting with all the county transportation directors at the Watson Center there in Clay County to try to form a coalition, if you will, of getting better funding for all the counties involved, and also try to tie our lines together. Currently, there's a Clay County line that comes into Putnam County and goes to Putnam Hall and picks up the residents to take them into Gainesville to do some work, so we're going to be working on that, so I just want you to know that Boyd is invited to that, and he's a big stakeholder, and it's really going to be their meeting and not ours. We're going to sit back and let them tell us what we can do to help them, so, just so you'll know that we are working on that, okay?
I'm glad, and I think Chip's on a committee that's working on it too.
Right.
We're all hitting it from different directions. It's going to take it.
All of northeast Florida where we can have transportation to shopping districts as well as the medical complexes in Jacksonville, Gainesville, I mean, everywhere. Trying to hit it really big.
Keep hitting. Thank you very kindly, I thought at first you were saying I had to really tune in because it sounded like you were moving the county lines.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I like our lines where they're at.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be, be sure of that in case you needed some, some support.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will reconvene as part of the Transportation Committee at 1400 hours. Entain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a great day.
Sir, yes, sir, on that one.